Good evening and welcome to the Montebello City Council meeting of March 22nd. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Mr. City Clerk, if you can please call roll.
Councilmember Jimenez. Councilmember Melendez.
Here.
Councilmember Tamayo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Peralta.
Present.
Mayor Torres.
Here. Mr. City Attorney, if you can please announce closed session items.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There are two items that we're asking the council to pull from tonight's agenda. We will bring those back at another date. That's item number one, which is conference with legal counsel, anticipate litigation. And item five, public employee performance evaluation matter. We still do need to recess into closed session for items two, three, and four. And inasmuch as those two items, one and five, have been pulled from tonight's agenda, a public comment on those two items would not be required to be received. Anytime, at this time, however, the public may speak on those items that are listed for closed session that we, the council will be discussing, which is two, three, and four, two, three, A and B, and four. If you are wishing to speak to the city council, you would need to fill out a card and submit it at this time. And you would have three minutes to address the council. Again, items one and five will not be heard tonight in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Clerk, do we have comments for items two through five, or two through four, I'm sorry?
Yes, Mayor, we do have four speaker cards for agenda item number four, for closed session.
Please proceed.
First speaker is Martha Cortez, followed by Cecilia Lopez.
Name, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Martha Cortez. I am a Montebello bus operator. And I'm here to talk about our wages. Our wages are, are very low. The, the economy, as you know, has gone up. The cost of living is, I can work nine hours overtime in two weeks, which is eighteen hours overtime in a month, and that's bringing me home after taxes and everything of $2,800. The basic rent around here is about $1,700. That doesn't leave me very much to support my family. So therefore, I'm moving things around. Sometimes I don't pay my, my mortgage. Sometimes I don't pay my utilities. There's just not enough to survive on, working those hours. We love our city. We love what we do. I'm a people person. I love my customers. And we love to move the buses for Montebello. And we just, we don't understand why we cannot come to an agreement on a cost of living raise. That's all we're asking for. Because I can't survive, and I know my fellow workers can't survive on what we get. The morale has been way down. Mental health, the city cares about mental health. I see the balloons outside all the time about mental health. We're under a lot of stress. The, the type of people out there, there, there's drugs that have, there are different drugs out there. The people that come into the bus, they're very violent. People are upset at us because there's not enough manpower. Yeah, so it takes a lot. Mental health, mental work, physical work that we go through. And we're not asking for much. We're just asking for a cost of living. You know, we, we don't make enough to get aid, and we don't make enough to survive. So, thank you.
Next speaker is Cecilia Lopez, followed by Barbara Reese.
Good evening, Mayor, city officials, city staff. It's great to be here once again in person. Greeting you all. My name is Cecilia Lopez. Like many city staff employees, I too wear many hats. I am a resident. I'm a Montebello bus operator. And now I'm the new general chairperson of Local 1701 here in Montebello. The ambience at Montebello Bus Lines Department, it is at its all-time low. The morale, the pay, the benefits, no one seems to care. The city conducted a comprehensive survey study three years ago, just so they can see on paper or have on paper, black and white, saying that we are fourteen below market value. Fourteen percent, fourteen percent. The city knowingly aware of this information wants us to accept a ten-tier step contract with baby step increases, baby steps, barely moving, nudges. Who's benefiting from this? Ask. No, no, not any association organization that has signed this contract is saying that. Our medical insurance went up thirty percent inflation, cost of living, all through the roof, everything, everything, is at its all-time high, except our pay, our benefits, our health, our well-being, our safety. Circulating rumors, threats that we're going to be contracted out to foothill transit. The shortage of manpower contributes to all these factors. Why does the city continue to set us aside like we don't matter? As if our jobs aren't significant enough. Ask your constituents, ask the residents of Montebello and the neighboring communities, what Montebello bus lines signify to them? What would the community, the passengers think of this unjust, unfair treatment, underpaid, unappreciated, overworked employees? Despite all this harsh working environment we're experiencing, we're still expected to bring good quality service. Can you imagine? Can you honestly continue to paint this beautiful picture that everything is okay? Nobody is saying nothing, keep us out of mine, out of sight, and don't even pay attention to us. You guys need to prioritize Montebello bus lines. We bring in the money to Montebello. Share the wealth with all your employees. There's plenty. Do not keep it all to yourselves and spread it only to department heads. Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara Reese, followed by Antonio Herrera.
Good evening, Mayor and city officials. My name is Barbara Ruiz. I am a bus operator with the city of Montebello. In the ten years that I have served, I, it has allowed me to see the shortcomings between us and other transit agencies. We continue to receive the short end of the stick, yet are expected to perform at our very best with the limited manpower. Working a two or three man job and having to endure the continued verbal and physical abuse from the customers we pick up daily, with no sense of protection from Montebello police officers because they do not board our buses anymore. We are more vulnerable than ever. We are expected to work for low pay, and due to the extreme inflation that continues to grow, we are all still having to carry on with the financial struggle. As of January 1st, 2023, our medical insurance has increased thirty percent, leaving us to pay six to eight hundred dollars a month, if not more, in order to keep our dependents insured. Yet the city refuses to give us a raise. That is unjust and demoralizing. Now we can't call in sick without possible repercussions. We are being interrogated and made to feel harassed. We've also been told that now we have to wait again until may for mediation regarding negotiations. All it is, is another delay. I'm sorry, but enough is enough. I say strike, strike, strike. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Antonio Herrera, followed by Yvette Frambus.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, members of the council and staff. My name is Antonio Herrera. I'm speaking as president of SMART Local 1701, which represents the bus operators, mechanics, service workers, and storekeepers at Montebello Bus Lines. I'm here to speak on the closed session item regarding negotiations. I'm happy to hear that we are going back to the negotiations table. However, I hope that it is for more than the one provision in question. A contract expired in December 2021. That's over a year ago. Our last contract gave us an eight percent raise that went towards paying for our purse. We have not had a true raise since 2019, which is why our salary is far behind than all the other neighboring transit agencies. We are currently being offered something similar to what the other bargaining associations accepted, and that is a ten-step pay scale that gives a one to three percent raise per year. There is possibilities of getting a bigger raise, but that's with an, that is with an exceptional evaluation, which is not guaranteed. What is guaranteed is that the cost of living is going up. What is guaranteed is that rent will increase. Cost of food and utilities will go up, and something that is also increasing is our health insurance. Montebello's transit service is really bad and in need of help due to the short staffing. The excuse we get is that everyone else is short-staffed, but that's not an excuse for Montebello. All other transit agencies have increased their pay to attract new employees. Montebello received millions of dollars in COVID relief meant for Montebello Bus Lines, but we have only seen an increase in hiring of administration. Many buses are not going out on the road, leaving many residents and people that work or shop in Montebello waiting longer than they should. We need a competitive salary that will attract new employees and keep the ones that we have right now. Please remember that our funding does not come from the general funds. There is a transit enterprise reserve that seems to be looking good. Recently, there was an approval of eight million dollars of that money to be used for solar panels. We never heard that the budget is bad. We've never heard that there is no money. So please reconsider your approach to the table and ask yourself if forty-two cents is enough, is sixty-seven cents enough? It's a little disappointing when the people offering these kinds of raises with six-figure incomes already are getting a sixteen to twenty percent raise themselves, and that's not in a span of five to 10 years like they want us to. We ask you to please understand and support your employees that do their best to represent the city the best it can. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Yvette Frambus, speaking on agenda item number three, part of closed session.
Good evening, Mayor Torres, Mayor Protem Peralta, and council members. I'm here tonight speaking in my personal capacity and first amendment right as a Montebello resident. I'm very troubled to hear that we are yet in another lawsuit, and that lawsuit being due to the negligence of the city manager. It is my understanding council was misled and misinformed by the city manager, causing council to enter into a contract in violation of a Montebello municipal code. I'm hoping that you can come to an amicable agreement. Also, I'm here to support our employees in transit and support their requests for negotiations and, and all that they are asking. So that's, I just want to say thank you. Good night.
Mayor, that concludes all speaker cards for closed session.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk, and thank you to our speakers, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We ask at this time the city council to recess into closed session for items number two, three, A and B, and item four. Be appropriate to recess.
And we will recess into closed session. We'll be back at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
We will reconvene session at 7:20 PM. Mr. City Attorney, can you please provide a report on closed session?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The record should reflect the City Council convened into closed session. The record should further reflect that Councilmember Jimenez joined the closed session at 6:19. That items, well, I'll go through them. Item two, Conference of Legal Counselants Anticipate Litigation. The City Council did authorize filing litigation in a, in one matter related to a unlawfully detainer item at the Home Two Suites and further to retain Stephen Byrne to handle that one item. That was unanimous five oh. Under item three, Conference of Legal Counselants Existing Litigation, the City Council received a briefing on the concerned residents of City of Montebello matter. Direction was provided to the City Attorney's Office, but no final action was taken, which is required to be reported at this time. On the second item, Neighbors for Elections Now, that matter was also briefed to the City Council. Direction was provided to my office, but since there was no final action, there is nothing further to report. Moving on to item four, which is Conference of Labor Negotiators, as listed on the agenda, the City Council did receive a briefing on that matter. There was no action taken. However, this matter will go back into closed session at the conclusion of the open portion of this evening's meeting to have further discussion on item number four. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report from closed session. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. We will now go to our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Deputy City Clerk, if you can please lead us in the invocation. And for our Pledge of Allegiance this evening, we have Staff Sergeant Sharon Rowe from the American Legion. She joined the Army in 1965 during Vietnam and worked for the chemical school at Fort McAllen in Alabama. She was discharged honorably in 1969, joining the National Guard in 1981 and serving until 2001. She is a resource for our community and has served over 20 years with our, with our military. So we are very honored to have you here this evening. If you can please approach the podium at the conclusion of our invocation and if we can please give Staff Sergeant Rowe a round of applause for her service and attendance.
We are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
I don't think I need a mic. Okay. If you are a veteran, you're allowed to salute. If you, all others, please place your hand, right hand over your heart and please stay with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Staff Sergeant Rowe. I will ask if my colleagues will entertain taking some of our presentations a little bit out of order as they're presented on the agenda here so we can move through Women's History Month and recognizing March 6th as COVID-19 Memorial Day, as well as recognition of Daniel Castillo-Lilier for his outstanding performance in the recent decathlon. For Women's History Month since 1987, the United States has recognized March as Women's History Month. It is during Women's History Month that we take time to celebrate and honor the immeasurable impact women have made and continue to make in both American and Montebello history. While the road to equality and inclusion has been a long one, women continue to demonstrate their leaders in their progress for change. As we recognize this special month in 2023, did you know that for the past 36 years, we have not only recognized Women's History Month, but a specific theme that is unique to each year's celebration? The National Women's History Alliance, which spearheaded the movement for March being declared National Women's History Month, announced that for 2023, the theme is celebrating women who tell our stories. Women have long played a crucial role in the art of storytelling, ranging from the different forms of today's modern media production utilizing avenues such as TV, print, radio, blogs, and social media platforms, to those of the past that were pioneering journalists to those of the past that were pioneering journalists leveraging writing and storytelling. Women have long been instrumental in passing our heritage in word and in prim to communicate the lessons of those who came before us. Women's stories and the larger human story expand our understanding and strengthen our connections with each other. Beyond this year's theme, I hope you'll join me in recognizing and paying tribute to all of the women of Montebello and across the nation who have and continue to make immeasurable amounts of positive impact in our world. And as I did on social media, I would just also like to recognize all the women that sit up here with me on the dais and all the women in our staff and those in the audience. Thank you for making our community a wonderful place to be and, and, and just everything that you do to contribute to our livelihoods here. For COVID-19 Memorial Day, I'd also like to recognize March 6th, which beyond, I apologize. I'd also like to recognize COVID-19 Memorial Day, which took place this year on March 6th. Beyond this single day, we must do our part every day to remember all who have passed away, fallen ill, or who continue to suffer from the impacts of COVID-19. As we enter the third year of this pandemic, we must continue to honor the lives of the more than 1 million Americans who have been lost to this horrible disease, as well as to honor our essential workers for heroically going above and beyond the call of duty during the most trying of times. And if my colleagues will join me down in front of the lectern to recognize Daniel Castillo Lillard for his outstanding performance in the recent decathlon. Teachers are often our biggest advocates as we're growing up. And Mr. Castillo Lillard's performance in the recent decathlon was brought to our attention by one of his teachers and one of his mentors at Montebello High School. And so this Montebello City Council is very proud to recognize your academic accomplishments and performance. The Academic Decathlon is a 10-event contest where high school students of all academic abilities and achievement work as a team to compete in the areas of language and literature, science, mathematics, social science, economics, art, music, essay, interview, and speech. So quite an accomplishment here. For the accomplishments of Mr. Lillard that we're recognizing this evening, he placed first in his division, in Division III. He received a $200 scholarship from the California Credit Union. He led our Montebello High School team to the second-place most improved score with 9.924 points in all of LA County, which included 40-plus schools, and totaled five medals in five different subjects, including gold, silver, and bronze. So if you can please join me in giving a round of applause for an outstanding academic performance. And there is one more event that I wanted to very quickly recognize before we continue with this evening's presentations. We had a significant event in South Montebello today. So I just wanted to share a little bit of an update with the community about what happened this afternoon. A tornado tore through a portion of Montebello at approximately 11:20 AM on Wednesday, causing severe building damage to a mostly industrial section of our city, specifically between Date Street and Vale and Montebello Boulevard and Maple. Teams from the National Weather Service confirmed late Wednesday afternoon that the event was in fact a tornado, and that was confirmed by Dr. Ariel Cohen. And I quote, "Today during the light morning hours, a very damaging storm affected the Montebello area. And based on what we've seen so far from the National Weather Service, we are determining that the damage is caused by a tornado around 11:20 AM this morning. Our hearts go out to everyone who was impacted by the severe weather today. We see the damage is extensive and many people are affected by it." Montebello received mutual aid from the cities of Whittier and Monterey Park with assistance from LA County Board of Supervisor Hilda Solis, including the Office of Emergency Management. Further, Senator Bob Archuleta contacted onsite staff to offer any assistance from the state. City staff from police, fire, public works, public affairs, parks and rec, community and economic development were all involved in today's response. A command center that's been set up onsite will remain until further updates. At this time, we do not have a timeline for the restoration of power. Staff will continue to work with the impacted businesses to provide support and assistance in the rebuilding. I did have a few minutes this afternoon to go down to the site and see some of the operations. I appreciate Chief Palais for providing a short briefing and for all of our public safety personnel that were onsite providing support to each other for, as we mentioned, the cities of Whittier and Monterey Park for their mutual aid and the partnership of Senator Bob Archuleta and the county and making sure that, making sure that the city is supported as well as our businesses in our community. Moving on to the next order of business, we will move to number seven, the SGV COG Montebello Project Update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Ricky Choi and I'm Director of Government and Community Relations for the San Diego Valley Council of Governments. It's a pleasure to be here today to provide an update on our Montebello Boulevard, Montebello Corridor Great Separation Project. We're close to breaking ground on this project and we're very excited. So this is a great opportunity for us to come before you to provide a brief update. But before we begin, I'd like to also introduce other members of the team who are here with us today. We have Senior Project Manager Gary Inceong. We also have our Director of Capital Projects, Kevin Lai, as well as Outreach Coordinator Maria Kano. And we also have our Engineering Design Consultants, Phil Balmaio and Keith Gilfelin from Moffett and Nickel. All right. Can you guys see that? All right. Tonight, we're back to provide a, the council and the residents of the city of Montebello with an update on where we're at currently with the Montebello Corridor project. All right, I'll continue. Tonight, we're back to provide the council and the residents of City of Montebello with an update on where we're at currently with the Montebello Corridor project. We'll go over the anticipated construction schedule and phasing, the planned detours, the parking impacts and during construction. And we'll also go over the extensive community outreach that we'll be doing over the course of the construction project. We were last here in April of 2022. It was actually Phil who was doing the talking during that time. And that's when we brought to the council the, the Construction Operations and Maintenance Agreement that was approved for the, the project. So for, actually for the benefit of Councilmember Tamaya, who was actually not on the council yet at the time, I thought it would be a good opportunity today to also provide a brief overview and reintroduce the agency and the project, if you don't mind, before we do some of these updates. So, the San Diego Valley Council of Governments is otherwise known as the COG, is a public agency. It's a joint powers authority made up of 31 cities that make up the San Diego Valley, including the city of Montebello. Includes the unincorporated communities of the San Diego Valley, which includes First District, First Superresor District, as well as the Fifth Superresor District, as well as the three municipal water districts that make up the San Diego Valley. I believe Councilmember Melendez actually serves as the delegate to the governing board. So thank you for service. And I believe Councilmember Jimenez is actually on our Capital Products and Construction Committee. And that committee actually oversees the ACE program, which is the Great Separation Program, which includes the Montebello Project. So as you know, we are a, a regional government planning agency that works with our member cities to address issues on a regional level. Some of our projects you may be familiar with include in the areas of housing and homelessness. We've been doing a lot with the city and the AMCAP program. If you recall, last year in May, in partnership with the AMCAP team, we actually helped with the San Diego Housing Trust, San Diego Housing Trust, opened a 30-unit tiny home village over at the Metrolinks parking lot. Another area that we focus on is in the area of transportation and infrastructure. And so that is where our Alameda Corridor East Construction Authority, or otherwise known as the ACE project, comes in. And that is our program of great separations and at-grade crossing safety improvements that we've been doing throughout the San Diego Valley. It was once the ACE Construction Authority, the Alameda Corridor East Construction Authority, that was created in 1988, but has since merged with the COG in 2016, 2017. And the purpose of the ACE program is really to mitigate the impacts of increase in freight traffic through the San Diego Valley and along the Alameda Corridor, Corridor East Trade Corridor that runs through the San Diego Valley, which is essentially the railroad tracks that run through the city of Montebello. The Port of Long Beach and the Port of Los Angeles, better known as the San Pedro Bay Ports Complex, they actually handle 40% of all of our imports and as well as our nation's imports, as well as our 25% of our exports. And so you think about all that freight traffic coming to, into our country through these cargo containers, they get offloaded, put on trucks, put on trains, and then they're transported through the Trade Corridor, through the transcontinental rail network to the rest of the country. So the increase of freight traffic significantly impacts, impacts communities that run along the rail corridors. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to mitigate these impacts, you know, improve traffic congestion and delays for vehicles, and especially for emergency responders and potential for collisions. There's been instances where vehicles and trains collide at these at-grade crossings. And also obviously, safety for pedestrians and bicyclists and, and of course motorists as well. And obviously, the environmental impacts related to idling vehicles when they're waiting for trains to go by. So as you see here, this is a picture of the ACE Trade Corridor and the entire region. Today, we've completed 15 great separation projects out of 19 throughout the San Diego Valley. Two are under construction. They're in the cities of City of Industry and the community of Roland Heights. And two are in design, including the Montebello Project. And that's part of our ACE Phase II program. We've also completed 40 crossing safety improvements. And we have eight crossings that are under design for additional safety improvements, including three in the city of Montebello. Just, just want to highlight some benefits of great separations. Our projects are mitigating the impacts, as I mentioned, of freight traffic and reconnecting communities in many ways. As I mentioned, the increase in freight traffic directly impacts the communities on the rail corridors and resulted in traffic increasing, traffic queuing issues and delays at crossings. And I know I see collisions. As you can see here, in the city of, this was, this was in the city of Industry off of Fairway Drive. And what happened there was a semi truck, there was traffic in semi- Drive, and what happened there was a semi truck, there was traffic, and semi truck stopped on the railroad crossing and was stuck when the gates came down and was struck by the locomotive. So, there are some, that's an instance of what we have seen in the past. So, grade separations will eliminate that because the grade separation will essentially separate the railroad tracks from the roadway, and that occurrence will be eliminated. So, Montebello Corridor project is one of our grade separation projects in our program, and essentially specifically is going to be an underpass. And what you see there on Montebello Boulevard, and what you see there, it was the existing condition of that roadway at grade crossing. And the project also includes at-grade improvements along Vale, Greenwood, and Maple. Montebello Boulevard carries over 21,000 vehicles per day, and it is blocked at the four crossings by a daily average of 43 trains, including 12 MetroLink trains daily. According to the Federal Railroad Administration, there's been 10 collisions that have been recorded at these crossings that has resulted in three fatalities and two injuries. I've mentioned already the benefits of the project, and I add a positive benefit when we do complete this project is that the project would then be eligible for, will allow the city to be eligible to apply with the Federal Railroad Administration for acquired zone designation, which essentially means that it'll restrict bell horn noises, horn noises from blowing through these crossings. The project's estimated to be cost $190.8 million. So, this is a significant investment in the city of Montebello. It's taxpayer dollars coming back to the local community, and at the same time, the project expected to create over 2,000 direct and indirect jobs. So, just a little bit of history about the project. The Montebello project was initially part of the Phase One program. We had a study done in 1997, it's kind of highlighting and identifying the key crossings in the San Diego Valley that need to be mitigated. There was 20 crossings at that time. Montebello was on the books for being one of them, but there was, but we've been working with the city for a number of years to figure out, you know, what the project would look like, what the concept would be. And so you can see here, we had a number of, in a series of community meetings, which we'll also go over a little bit later. We met with staff, and we met with city council, and did a number of presentations throughout this time period. We presented updates to the council and continued to discuss options until 2016. That's when this council at the time approved the concept plan. And from then on, we've been moving forward with the design, the right-of-way acquisitions, as well as working with all the various agencies involved, including Union Pacific, Union Pacific Railroad, other third-party utility companies, and other project stakeholders to move the project forward. In April of last year, if you recall, the city council, as I mentioned, approved the COM agreement, which was significant. And then we've been working to secure the funding for the project, which we needed to get to construction. And you may have noted that, or have read that we were allocated $67.8 million in state funding by the California Transportation Commission in December. And so, we had a number of milestones we had to reach, that we need to reach in order to get to this point, where we're ready to move the project to construction, and we're very excited to be at this point. It's been a long time coming. We do want to take this time to also thank city staff, especially Director Public Works James Enriquez, as well as the rest of the city staff, city manager's office as well, for their efforts throughout the years, for being a partner through this process. And just with that, I will turn it over to our senior project manager, Carrie Insang, who will provide the technical updates on this project.
Good evening, Mayor Torres, Mayor Protemp Peralta, and members of the city council. Again, my name is Carrie Insang. I'm the senior project manager for the San Gabriel Valley COG. Try to advance. We're happy to provide this status update on the project. We're happy to let you know that the design on the grade separation component itself is at 100%. It's been 100% complete. The design of the at-grade components at Vale Avenue and Greenwood Avenue are also at 100%. The design of the at-grade safety improvements at Maple Avenue, which will remain open in its final condition, is at 65%. We're happy to report that all necessary easements, temporary construction easements, as well as permanent easements, and all properties have been acquired for this project. As Ricky mentioned, we recently were allocated 67 million from the California Transportation Commission for the construction of this project. In addition to that, we have another $15 million from the Section 190 Grade Separation Project from the state, as well as $5.906 million from ATP Cycle Six, also from the state that's been allocated towards the construction of this project. For the environmental requirements, we have filed CEQA exemptions for the grade separation as well as the at-grade components. This is a rendering of the final product that you've probably already seen, but as you can see in this rendering, Montebello Boulevard will be lowered under the Union Pacific Railroad tracks and also under Olympic Boulevard, and then proceeding north or towards the top of that picture, Montebello Boulevard will join the existing grade as it approaches Los Angeles Avenue. We will also construct a dogleg for Roosevelt Avenue to intersect with Montebello and then continue with the remainder of Roosevelt Avenue to the east or to the right. The next few slides will show you the architectural treatments for the retaining walls and the bridges, and the bridge for the grade separation. These architectural treatments have been discussed with the prior and current directors of public works. What you see here is identifying signage that says City of Montebello on one of the retaining walls as you're approaching, as you're traveling north on Montebello Boulevard, approaching the underpass. It has a ribbed surface on the retaining wall to deter graffiti, as well as, again, Montebello signage. This is the architectural treatment for the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge, which will also have identifying Montebello signage. And then, the next slide shows the retaining wall as the roadway proceeds north, north of Olympic Boulevard and meets with the rest of the, of Montebello Boulevard to the north. Again, the architectural treatment, it consists of a ribbed structure to prevent graffiti or deter graffiti. This is a graphic for Greenwood Avenue and its final configuration. We will be installing new curb ramps, new curb and gutter, new sidewalks. We will be installing new pedestrian signage and barriers for safety. We will also be installing new railroad crossing gates and signals, as well as installing new medians to prevent cars from going around, going around the railroad arms when they're down, to prevent the possibility of collisions there. Vale Avenue is going to be similar to Greenwood, where we will be installing new curb ramps, new curb and gutter, sidewalks, new pedestrian gates, and signage for safety. We will be also installing new railroad signals, new railroad crossing arms, and again, we will be installing medians to prevent cars from going around those gates when they're This is a graphic of the Maple Avenue intersection at its final configuration. Again, Maple Avenue will remain open, and as with the other crossings, we'll have new curb ramps, new curb and gutter, new sidewalks, and safety barriers for pedestrians. The next steps for this project are to advertise the project for bids, for competitive bids. We're currently putting together the invitation for bids package for this project. We expect to issue that and put it out on the street for bids at the end of this month. We will be awarding the construction contract in June or July of this year. That is a commitment that we have to this California Transportation Commission for the funding of this project. We expect to have the vacant properties that we've acquired along Montebello Way be demolished beginning in the fall of 2023, fall of this year. The main construction on the at-grade safety components and the grade separation will begin in winter of 2023. We are anticipating a four-year roughly timeline for completion of this project. We've been experiencing some delays in our two current projects that are under construction, so we're building in some contingency for this project based on what we've learned from, with our current projects that are under construction right now. The construction will be done in phases with first, the demolition. We're going to have to do some major utility relocation work. We're going to need to do some improvements to Vale and Greenwood for the detours, and then we're going to need to build a shoe fly or temporary rail lines to keep the Union Pacific Railline operational throughout the course of the construction, and then the bridges will be built. We have traffic detours that we've already planned out, as well as we've identified parking impacts, which I'll be discussing in the next couple of slides. So, this is a graphic of the tours that we're planning during the construction of the underpass. What you see there in red, I believe, is Montebello Way and Montebello Boulevard closed during construction. For the traveling public, for cars that are going to be coming south on Montebello Boulevard, they will be directed to turn right onto Whittier, and then to turn left onto Vale. Vale will be restripped to have two southbound lanes and one northbound lane to accommodate the increase in traffic, to accommodate the detour traffic. And then the cars will then be directed to turn left on, I'm sorry, I can't read that. I don't have my, I don't have my far reading glasses. They will be directed to turn left, and then they will join Greenwood from there. Thank you. For cars that are traveling north on Greenwood, as they approach Montebello Way, Montebello Way will be closed due to construction, so they will be directed to continue traveling north on Greenwood. Greenwood will be restripped for the detour, to have two northbound lanes and one southbound lane, again, to accommodate the increase in traffic. And from there, they will turn right onto Whittier and left onto Montebello to continue their way. The duration for the detours, we are expecting three years for the duration, and the total construction about 44 months, so roughly four years. In addition to the detours, our traffic analysis has indicated that we need to provide some mitigations at location A and location B there, as you see. We will be adding some red curb at those two locations, but they will be removed, and the parking will be restored to, will be restored at the conclusion of the construction at location A, which is Whittier Boulevard and Concourse. We're expecting to lose about six spaces, six parking spaces due to the, to the red curb, the temporary red curb. And at location B, which is Los Angeles Avenue and Bluff, we're expecting to lose about 27 parking spaces due to the temporary red curb. And again, those red curb, temporary red curb parking restrictions will be removed once the project is completed. This next graphic shows the temporary parking restrictions during construction along Vale and Greenwood during the time that the detours are in place. So, for Vale, we are going to add a no-parking red curb during the detour in the southbound lane of about 150 feet. And in the northbound lane, we're adding 450 feet of red curb for an approximate loss of 33 spaces during construction. And on Greenwood Avenue, we will have, we will be adding red curb in the northbound direction, 360 feet of red curb, for a total of approximately 20 spaces, again, during In the ultimate configuration, the red curb, the intermittent red curbs that are along Vale and Greenwood will remain. They are there now. And in the ultimate condition, we will be adding 114 feet of no-parking red curb along Vale for a loss of approximately six spaces, and that's in the ultimate condition. During construction, our contractor will be working hard to mitigate, mitigate effects from debris, construction dust, graffiti. We will be making sure to do weed abatement during this time. Our contractor will also be monitoring noise and vibration and trying to mitigate those as much as possible. And the San Gabriel Valley COG staff will be fielding inquiries from the public and local businesses to make sure that we respond to those issues or concerns or complaints on an ongoing and timely basis. And I'm going to turn it over now to Ricky to discuss the outreach.
So, community outreach is an important component of all of our projects. As a government agency, in delivering these infrastructure projects to the communities that we serve in the San Diego Valley, we prioritize outreach and community engagement throughout the life of our projects. So, just wanted to highlight, if you will, some of the community outreach activities to date. Going back to the creation of the former Alameda Corridor East Construction Authority in the early 2000s to now, we've had ongoing outreach with city staff, with the officials, the council, the community, the key and key stakeholders throughout this process. We've had a series, as you can see, a series of community meetings and open houses. In the beginning, when we started developing our program, we reached out to residents, business owners, and property owners. We held a, and then later on, we held a town hall in 2011 at the Montebello Senior Center, a community open house and public meeting in 2016 at Quiet Cannon, and we've engaged the emergency responders. We worked closely with the school district, Montebello Unified, and we can continue to have dialogue and update them regularly throughout the course of construction. We also sent out project postcard updates in 2017 and 2018, and that was a mailing that we did to about 3,000 and so residents and businesses in the area, in the immediate vicinity of the project area, updating folks on SASL project. And then, as you see later on, we actually also hosted Mayor Torres and Mayor Protemp Peralta on a tour of the project in 2021 in the midst of the pandemic. We also held a public outreach workshop last year on our at-grade crossing improvements project, a component of the project. project, a component of the project. Here we go, community outreach. So, you know, we have a team, actually, who will be engaged with the community when we start construction and will be available to answer any questions, address any project issues, and keep residents, businesses, and the community at large informed and updated during construction. The ACE Project Helpline is a helpline that we have and is available for residents to call, a toll-free number. We also have our office phone number right there as well, that folks can call and reach us if they have any inquiries, questions about the project. We actually also use social media a lot. We're putting information, construction alerts, notifications of construction activities on our various social media platforms, including Twitter, as you see there. We have a Twitter handle created just for the project, for project updates, @monobellogs on Twitter. And then we have our general ACE Project handle. So if you would like to follow and get updates, that's probably the best place to go. We'll also have updates, you know, on our Facebook, Instagram. And we also will be utilizing Nextdoor to get information out to the local residents as well. And so our effort here is really to notify and to, you know, inform the community in advance of construction activities that may be impacting these individuals. We have a project website, www.theaceproject.org, where you get, again, you can get information on our project. We will notify impacted residents through a number of means, construction alert notices being one of them. These are essentially flyers notifying individuals and people who are impacted to prepare of upcoming construction activities, whether it is a road closure, a lane closure, night work, or what have you. We will draft flyers and notices that we will then also translate into multiple languages, primarily in Spanish and Chinese. But given demographics of community, we are open to other languages as well. And we disseminate those to the impacted residents, businesses, property owners, also notify the emergency responders, since they need to know if there are any impacts to roadways and other key stakeholders. We do this outreach door-to-door, which means we have a team that goes out door-to-door and notify those who are directly impacted by the upcoming construction activities. We also will be developing a list of key contacts, a database, if you will, that we will regularly update. And people who reach out to us, who want to be part of this list, can, we'll disseminate information to them on a regular basis. And we also do phone calls, and we do a lot of, we work very closely with the businesses as well that are impacted. And then also, we like to do a construction notice at the start of the project that will essentially inform the community of what they will expect once construction begins. And we also plan to also do a construction kickoff community open house, which will serve the purpose of also informing the public, inviting them to come and get information about the project and also learn more about what to expect. And then go over a lot of the details in which Carrie went over in terms of the detours, the parking impacts and restrictions and so forth, and the phasing of construction. We also have a business support program. And the purpose of the business support program is really to help the directly impacted businesses as we go through construction. Some of these areas that we'll be working in, there are businesses adjacent to it. So we'll be working closely with those businesses and provide assistance to them in ways that we can, which includes providing directional signage, as well as providing additional, perhaps advertising or other promotional support that can help drive traffic, even though there are some roadway impacts for the public and the motorists. So we work very closely with them to ensure that there's access at all times to each and every one of these businesses that will be impacting. We also have staff, as I mentioned, that will serve as a liaison to these businesses on a regular basis and will continue to inform and provide updates. We have a direct mail marketing campaign that we usually do at a lot of these construction projects that we've done in the past. As you see here in the middle of the screen, that's an image of an ad that we've done for the Durfee Avenue Projects, which is in the City of Pico Rivera, that was completed last year. We like to highlight a lot of the businesses and just reinforce the message that the local businesses are open for business and to encourage residents and so forth to patronize them. And then these are some additional signage that we've placed strategically at different places to ensure that, you know, people who are either walking down the street or who are driving by will see and realize that their favorite business or establishment is still open during construction. And so we'll have additional directional signage at key locations indicating access points. And again, we work closely with the businesses, and sometimes we actually develop advertising campaigns and even multilingual advertising campaigns designed to target whatever whoever their consumer or customer is. And then lastly, another component of our outreach is the school safety outreach that we do. Part of that is reinforcing construction and railroad safety messaging to a lot of the schools in the area of our construction site, but also in the community in general, especially at ATC, which is adjacent to railroad crossing. We've actually had the pleasure of working very closely with them in recent years. But our school outreach program includes presentations, safety presentations that are age-appropriate. And we also develop and distribute safety educational materials for kids from K to 12. And part of that is, as I mentioned, we put on these assemblies and work with the local principals and talk about safety at the railroad crossings and also safety around construction site. There's going to be a lot of equipment, you know, in the city and along these railroad crossings, and so we just want to make sure that the kids are aware that it's dangerous and, you know, what they need to look for. And just to reinforce a lot of these, you know, safety measures that should be taking place on a regular basis, regardless of the construction along railroad tracks. We'll continue to engage a lot of the parent organizations at these local schools as well, provide presentations and look for opportunities to disseminate information to them at nearby schools, and then do targeted outreach and continuous outreach to ATC. And I just want to mention, what you're seeing there, images are, back in 2016, we worked really closely with a group of students at ATC and with the principal at the time, you know. And then this was actually a project that they came to us with, where the kids, the students there saw the need to highlight to their classmates the dangers of crossing the railroad tracks and just loitering around the tracks. So we worked with them for a number of months in 2016, and they wanted to develop a skit. And they actually did develop a skit and performed it in front of the school, as you see there. And it was actually very inspiring and very moving to see the kids, you know, rally together and come up with this idea and, you know, execute it. And so we were fortunate and grateful to be able to be part of that process. And with that, that's our brief update on the Monobello Corridor project. And with that, I'll open up to any questions and to myself for the rest of the team.
Thank you, Mr. Troy, and thank you, Ms. Encion, for your presentations this evening. I will go down our roll call for any comments or questions, starting with Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you for that presentation, Ricky and Carrie. I do have a couple of questions, Ricky. So I know that we've, and I had to ask your assistant city manager right now, if the town halls that have been hosted, you mentioned the one at QC's, just one at QC's?
Quiet Cannon, yes.
Okay, so now that we've gone into districts, I see that with the parking situation, I mean, we already have in the South Side a significant amount of troubles with the parking situation. I would like to see if perhaps, being that it looks like Bluff and the streets that are going to be red-curbed intersect with District Number Three, Four, and Five, if we could possibly host maybe at least two town halls for the residents in that area? Because I'm going to say that while many have asked about the grade separation project and people are asking for the quiet zones, this is something that I know everyone can anticipate. We're going to have the traffic situation, we're going to have the parking situation. So if at some point down the line, before people start getting too agitated, because I would be if I didn't have, if I was misinformed or not informed about the timeline, right? Like, the red curb is going to be there for X amount of years. And so if you, the team could potentially put something together for the South Side residents before people get to, I mean, again, it's going to happen whilst a lot of us, and I know all of us, most of us in the South Side want this to happen. Of course, you know, we don't want to deal often with these inconveniences, right? But I want to make sure that the community is better informed and well-informed about just the timeline.
Okay, yeah. We do plan to do a host of open house that would be open to all residents of the city of Monobello. We could do some additional targeting outreach if there's any specific pockets of residents or that you think may benefit from more one-on-one conversation about what the impacts are. If you'd like to provide that with staff, and staff can get that to us, we can reach out to those residents or those people in your district.
That would be great. Because, of course, you know, we do know that it's probably going to affect every resident that drives, whether you live in the southern part or in the northern side of Monobello. You're going to, we're going to have to at some point during our day and for those three, four years, deal with that, going in that area. But yes, I would really appreciate it if the team could put something like that for the South Side.
Sure. And then I would encourage that, you know, when we do start construction, that if there are any, you know, questions or issues that your constituents may bring to you, that feel free to give them our information. I would be happy to respond expeditiously.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Councilmember Melendez?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I know I met with all of you, I think it was last week, right? And you addressed a lot of the questions that I had at that meeting in this presentation. I also want to thank you guys for reaching out to the Monobello homeowners, Monobello Village Homeowners Association. I know they reached out to the whole council. And I know, I think there was some logistical issues maybe with having a meeting, but I know they did tell me that you all did reach out to them. And I believe they're having, you're all going to have a meeting with them, representative is going to meet with you guys. And again, their concern is the parking issue, right? I think they're located between Olympic and Los Angeles, and I know there's going to be some parking issues, or there might be. So thank you again for reaching out, and, you know, we'll continue to have that dialogue. Just to say the, you know, the historical component to this, this has been, this started in 1997, and to see it now, 2023, for it to actually get started, it's been quite the journey. So huge investment for the city. It's going to definitely help out, alleviate the traffic in that area, just the whole area in the city. I saw that, can you remind me again, I have a couple more questions. When is this project set to begin?
Later this year, I think, fall, right? Yeah.
Fall 2023. And when will the outreach begin in regards to the detours and the other, you know, the parking situation and all that?
We're going to start doing, starting the outreach now, but in terms of the more specific outreach related to these impacts, as we get closer to when these impacts will be implemented, you know. But before that, in general, as we had presented today, the same information will be presented at this open house that we're going to do for the community, so they can get a better idea of what it's going to look like, what the impacts are going to be, what the detour is going to be. But when the actual detour is going to occur, it'll be a while before that happens, and then we'll do additional notification at that time, directly for the directly impacted, you know, residents, property owners, and businesses in the area.
Thank you. And if I understood correctly, too, there is the Maple grade separation, that's, the design is 60% completed?
The Maple Avenue, the at-grade improvements, yes.
Okay, 60%. Do you know when that might be finalized?
Carrie, do you know when? Council says midsummer or late summer.
Okay, perfect. And just my last thing, I want to highlight, too, the business support program. That's something, too, that's important to us, of helping our businesses, specifically the ones that are near the area while this is happening. It's a four-year project, and we appreciate that there is something there for the businesses. So thank you all, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilmember Melendez. Councilmember Thamayo?
Thank you for the oversight, for my edification of this project. Just really looking forward for this to start and looking to the collaboration between the city and your group and how it's going to affect the businesses and residents.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor Protem Peralta.
Yeah, again, just, I'd like to concur with everyone. One of, I think, the most popular questions we tend to get, whether it's online or residents reaching out to us, is when is this project going to start? You know, it's been in the making since 1997, I believe, and it's a major project that will be affecting the everyday lives of our residents, not only in South Monobello, but throughout Monobello, since folks drive up and down that street. And so having this presentation today, I think, really clears up a lot of the concerns and a lot of the questions that residents have been wanting answered in regards to project timeline, mitigation for traffic, detouring, parking restrictions. I do want to just highlight the thoughtfulness in regards to the business support program, as well as the outreach to schools, since we do have schools in that area and businesses that will be heavily affected by this for a few years. Being able to do that outreach prior, I think, is extremely crucial to get parents, students, business owners, and residents really informed and up to date about what they will expect and how they can best mitigate the issues that they will be facing through the construction phase of this project. And so just definitely looking forward to the community outreach aspect. I do concur that it would be good to target and have, you know, if possible, a community outreach session in South Monobello, where our residents will be heavily affected in that area, and really, as council, do our best to reach out to all those and ensure that they're in attendance. And just having that continuous updates to the website, as well as social media, I know, is going to be extremely crucial. And thank you for the project helpline. I think that's, again, another layer of just thoughtfulness into this project. And so overall, very, very thankful for today's presentation and for your attendance here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I really appreciate the San Gabriel Valley COG for just being very responsive to council for, you know, any requests, information, and being very responsive to our residents in terms of updates. Obviously, this is a massive project in terms of its dollar figure, and with Monobello's recent move to districting, the fact that it touches on three of our districts just shows the extent to which, you know, this project is going to touch a lot of lives in a very positive way, right? We're going to go through a little bit of growing pains as we look at these detours and go through construction, but ultimately, servicing the $20,000, the $20,000 cars per day that travel through Monobello Boulevard is ultimately going to improve the quality of life for Monobello residents, as well as everyone that uses that path to commute. As the Mayor Protem started to go down, I think that there is a few questions that this presentation really answered. One of them, is this project still happening? Are we getting a quiet zone? Am I affected and how? And how do I get updates? So I really appreciate this presentation being comprehensive to that end. Hopefully, we can get this presentation, and I'll have slides that I can send directly to our residents to say, this is exactly what's going on to this end. But I think over the past year and the past couple of years, we've seen some real steps toward realizing this project that we haven't seen for a little bit of time now. Granted, this council is relatively new, and I know that some members of the team have been working on this since 2016, if not longer. But, you know, the tens of millions of dollars in funding that have come through recently as well. as well as the completion of all these designs and, and this month with the release of the RFP, we're seeing those very concrete steps as we're nearing these, these final months towards starting demolition and construction. So just want to repeat the thanks of all of my colleagues. I do want to send a message to our community that it is our responsibility to disperse this information and to make sure that you stay connected and informed. All of my colleagues here walked door-to-door during the campaigns, and so I think for a few of us, we're gonna have our work cut out for us. The Mayor Protem and I volunteered to walk and pass out flyers, and so I hope that my colleagues will join us in informing the community. But it is also incumbent on the community to pay attention and to look out for these notices. As the COG mentioned, there's gonna be a lot of ways that they're trying to get information out. And so this is really going to be, take both parties to make sure that this is as successful and as easy as a transition as, as we can manage. So Mr. Choi, just want to thank you and your team for every, all of your efforts so far and looking forward to further communications. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and council. You know, we're just very excited. This has been a long journey and a long time coming, and we're very excited to be able to deliver this project eventually to the city of Montebello. We look forward to welcoming you and inviting you to our groundbreaking later this year. So thank you.
Thank you very much. If my colleagues would entertain moving business around a little bit, I see we have quite a hefty presentation here from MCAP, and we are very curious to understand the state of our police services in Montebello. I think that we can get through our regular business and consent calendar pretty quickly here. So if we can move to the consent calendar, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Items on consent are considered to be routine. Any items a member wishes to discuss should include any matters the public has requested to speak on. And those should be designated at this time. Other items may be approved in a single motion. Such approval will also waive the reading of any ordinance. Do we have any speaker cards for consent agenda items?
Yes, we do.
Please proceed, Mr. City Clerk.
We have speaker cards for agenda item number 13, 14, and 15. First speaker, speaking on agenda item number 13, is Craig Barker, followed by Yvette Phimbros.
Mr. Barker, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Craig Barker. I've been a city employee for 32 years, which includes two and a half years as an auxiliary firefighter for the city of Montebello. For a little bit of history, my dad was raised in Montebello, went to Eastmont Elementary, and graduated from Montebello High, and continued on to serve the Montebello Fire Department for 32 years. So as a kid, I spent a lot of time in Montebello, and I spent half my life working and serving the city of Montebello. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Montebello Firefighters Local 3821, including fire management. We are in support of the city council reinstating civil service commission, and quite frankly, every employee group in the city should be supporting it as well. This gives employees of the city added levels of protections, which they clearly have not had for the last couple of years. I believe if you had civil service, you could have avoided some of the lawsuits and have cost the city millions and millions of dollars. That money could have been spent on other resources in the city. For those of you who speak against civil service tonight, have you talked to the employee groups or asked how the morale is in apartments instead of just supporting something you don't know much about? City council and to the community, do you support the employees of the fire department? If so, then you need to support civil service coming back. Civil service goes back to the 40s in the city, and it seemed to hide, we, we seem to hire and get through all those years up to this point. I agree, I agree that it's difficult. It takes a lot of staff time, and processes are difficult to hire and attract. So why don't we start valuing the current employees by trying to keep them? The city has pushed experienced, qualified employees and applicants out of the city. In the last meeting, individuals spoke saying that bringing civil service back will hinder and stall hiring practices. We haven't had civil service for the last couple of years, and we are at one of the lowest levels, staffing levels, in the history of fire and police. This falls on the departments in the city for falling behind on recruiting and staffing departments. We are members of Los Angeles County Federation of Labor and are in communication with them. Most of the council were endorsed by the labor fed who support employees. Once again, your Montebello firefighters support civil service coming back and hope you understand how important this is, not only to us, but the rest of the employees in this city. Thank you for your support on this item.
Next speaker is Yvette Phimbros, followed by Cindy Harper.
Good evening. I'm here tonight speaking in my personal capacity and First Amendment right as a Montebello resident. I was quite astonished to witness the city directors and chiefs come to the podium to speak against the city of Montebello wanting to reinstate the civil service commission at the last regular council meeting. First, the directors' positions fall under the Federal Labor Standards Act exemption. They are basically on duty here at the city council meetings. And while here at the meeting, they are in their official capacity, and even when speaking during public comment, I find this to be a major conflict of interest. They are not residents of our city. They are employed and paid representatives. Second, our city has several lawsuits from former city employees who claim to have been wrongfully disciplined and terminated. Third, there has been much question to the qualifications of many of these new hires to our city since the decommissioning of the civil service commission in November 2020. In my opinion, the response by council to address the alarming increase of lawsuits and concerns that residents have in regard to the qualifications of recently hired employees is not only appropriate, but essential to reinstate the civil service commission. These directors and chiefs need to realize they are not footing the bill for the lawyer fees, court costs, and awarding these plaintiffs their judgments. This is coming out of the city budget that we residents pay taxes towards. The city manager and human resources director are named on these lawsuits, and employees are not afforded the right and benefit that comes along with a civil service commission and having their case heard by an independent body. This benefit would allow for the independent body made up of city of Montebello residents to hear these claims and, in most cases, avoid a lawsuit against the city, saving thousands, if not millions, of city tax dollars, again, in court costs, lawyer fees, and judgments that come out of the city coffers. Having a civil service commission per Government Code 45008 and Montebello Municipal Code 2.60.060 would provide the conducting of competitive examinations to ascertain the fitness of applicants for positions and employment in the city service. Finally, I even question the validity of the action taken in November 2020 to decommission the civil service commission. Because per Government Code Section 45007, after the city having adopted a civil service commission, it would require city electors at a special or regular municipal election to approve by two-thirds of those voting on the proposition to elect to withdraw from having a civil service commission. Nevertheless, I believe that it is the duty of this council to reinstate a civil service commission in the city of Montebello tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker is Cindy Harper, followed by Beatrice Voskus.
Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Protem and council members. I really hope that the city votes to bring back the civil service commission. Everybody already said everything I was going to say. But the only thing I really want to also express, I did a little research on other civil service commissions, and they're made up of professional people who are lawyers, privy to labor laws, and also human resources people who know how to handle these kind of things. They're just not the ordinary person. So, and it's important to have residents also. So let's get to this, and let's make our city safe and get some more people hired. Thank you.
Next speaker is Beatrice Voskus.
Evening, Mayor, good evening, city councils. My name is Beatrice Voskus. I'm the Vice Local Chair for Smart TD Local 1701 and Transportation. I'm here to say, we are, we as members of Smart TD, we're wanting back civil services. Since you are the main role of policymakers, we're asking to please consider bringing back civil services. They already said everything I had to say, too. But one of the main things I want to make clear is that doing, I've seen people bring grievances and talk about grievances here. Well, we file grievances at transportation. We file them, and we get no response. We get no response at step number one. We get no response at step number two. We get no response at step number three. So at this, bringing back civil services, that gives us a fair chance of somebody hearing our cases. As you know, we have a lot of lawsuits. Everything that happens, our members have to get a lawyer. Because nobody hears us, nobody sees us, and we're out of sight, out of mind. So we, Smart TD local members, are in support for you to bring civil services back. And don't forget, you guys are the main roles of policymakers. So think about your employees, and think about what's right, and think about saving money that, that gives us a fair chance even to get raises, because that's something that, this affects our races, too. Thank you.
Next speaker, and I do apologize if I mispronounced the name, Yuong Seok, from Allied Trades.
If the audience can please refrain from clapping and keep this feeding to the business, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yuong Seok. I am in front of you today on behalf of Painters and Allied Trades, District Council 36, on behalf of our business manager, Luis Robles, and our political director, Robert Smith. We have submitted on record our letter of support for this ordinance, and we have clearly stated the technical reasons why we believe that this ordinance should be read and be accepted in its second reading tonight. But most importantly, I am just going to state why Painters and Allied Trades, who have, who don't represent any workers in Montebello, is in front of you today. And my understanding also is that there are also other letters on record from Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trade Council in front of you as well. Just wanted to note that. We're here because it really makes a lot of sense to have a civil service commission that complements what a lot of the employee association and these union brothers and sisters who are in front of you today are trying to do, to make sure that your employees have a safe and sound workplaces where they could have a voice in dictating how they're treated on their job. So we're here in solidarity of your city employees and the unions that represent them. And lastly, as closing, I would like to just make a observation. Last time I was here in front of you, all of you that, well, obviously, aside from the new members, have pledged your commitment and support to creating a sound and good, safe workplace for city employees at Montebello. In fact, in a lot of the endorsement interviews and a lot of the private conversations I know you have with many labor leaders in LA County area, all of you have stated your commitment to workers' justice and solidarity and making sure that workers have a safe environment to work. I urge you to, tonight, by voting to pass this second reading, that you will be honestly walking your talk and your commitment that you have displayed before by voting right on this, on this item. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Margot Isner, speaking on agenda item number 14, followed by Jesse Garcia.
Hi, Margot Isner, I also had a card in for public orals, but right now, I will speak about number 14, because it has to do with a thing about concrete repair. And I want to make sure that if there's concrete that needs repairing, it is actually the concrete that the people, residents, and the neighborhoods and all that need be having done, rather than just an arbitrary thing done by a computer. The example I keep giving is that the part of Via Valverde, the street off of Beverly that goes south towards Widder Boulevard and, and does run into a part of North Concourse, is in desperate need of, of, of repair. And instead of repairing that, there's an arbitrary thing that they just did the street part of that's north of Beverly Boulevard. I don't know if they don't know about directions, or if they just have a computer. So this is why I want to make sure that whatever money is spent on concrete repair, that it's also connected to the actual people who use the street and use, or use the sidewalk, or whatever it is. And that's what I really am here to say. But I wanted to make something about public comment, which doesn't seem to be happening tonight. I didn't do it on closed session, I knew it was just on general. And again, it's if you have a lot of money to get a bond for a property, like a private enterprise called Top Golf, then, and also this bunch of payment out to them just from the money that was made from selling our water company, well, this is, this is really related, that we just really need to make our park poor city have a bunch of parkland that we need for our recreation and our, and it won't cost a lot of money to designate the required parkland of what remains of the golf course into being parked and open space. And that would not, that would give us the people what we really need and would help the city fulfill the requirement to have that. And again, it wouldn't cost a lot of money to do that, whereas some of these other things are costing a huge amount of money. I also support giving the employees of the city some of the benefits of the bond and of the money that was gotten from the water company that, you know, the bus company is such a precious treasure. And so I don't know if that blends things together, but it is to just make sure that whatever work is done on the streets or the sidewalks with concrete is actually what the people really need. I dare you, who is, whatever district the person is who lives on Via Valverde, they, they just really need people to help them. So whoever's that district, it comes right off of Beverly Boulevard. The North Concourse part was paved, is not very busy, and it's very, it's just, it just was unneeded. And the north part of Valverde was just fine, but the really part that needed it. So please be really aware of what your people, your constituents, as I am, are concerned about. I live in District 2, but I'm concerned about everybody in the entire city, and I hope that you give us all the taxpayers, residents, and voters what we really need. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jesse Garcia, speaking on agenda item number 15.
Good evening, Councilmember Mayor Torres, Mayor Protem Peralta, and District Council members. I'm here on behalf of Tulsa Street residents. We did have a couple of the other residents, but they had to leave. So I did my due diligence and, and read the actual report, and a couple of key takeaways. It's, one, it's a cul-de-sac, it's not a through-street. The other, it's based on the report, 60% of the cars that are parked there are non-residents. And that's all the overflow from the residences and in construction and buildings that opened up. And everybody else that parks there, I mean, the residents wouldn't mind, but the cars never move. I mean, they'll, they'll be there after the street sweeper comes by, and they'll stay there till the following week, and they just don't move. So, so based on that, based on what the report says, the recommendation is to do a public hearing. If it was a through-street, I would agree with you. Yes, there would be a lot of people that would be affected. The only ones that are affected right now are those who live on that street. So I'm kind of urging our District 5 representative to make a motion to dispense with the public hearing, move forward for a vote, and implement forthwith. Now, if that's possible, I don't know. But basically, a public hearing just delays and aggravates the issue on hand. So I'm kind of hoping we can get this done a lot quicker. I mean, I know COVID happened, we had to wait. You know, we went through the whole process, elections, the whole nine yards. But now that everybody's here, hopefully, we can get this done and get it taken care of. It'll make a lot of people on that street. I did put another card in for a non-agenda, so I just want to get this out of the way. This is for Mayor Protem Peralta. I like your idea of your furry friends and adoption, but I'd like to have a challenge here for the city council. Currently, you only are allowed to have three dogs. Let's raise it up to four dogs with the stipulation of one has to be an adoptive pet, one has to be a rescue. I'm pretty sure you'll get a lot more people going for the rescues if you do that. Thank you.
Mayor, that does conclude all the speaker cards under consent agenda items.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, then it's appropriate to poll the council to see which items the council wishes to poll for separate discussion. If I may proceed?
Please do.
Let me get the order for tonight. Thank you. Starting with Councilmember- Thank you. Starting with Councilmember Jimenez. And we're talking, we're discussing at this point, items 13 through 22. Do you wish to have any items pulled? Thank you. Councilmember Melendez.
No items.
Councilmember Tamayo?
None, no items.
Mayor Protem Peralta?
13 and 18.
Which ones?
13 and 18.
13 and 18, okay. And Mayor, Mayor Torres.
16, 18, and 21.
16. Which was the second one?
18.
18?
And 21.
21, okay. So with that, we've received public comment on the various items we have pulled from council, items 13, 16, 18, and 21. That would be appropriate then to entertain a motion to approve items 14, 15, 17, 19, 20, and 22.
Is there a motion?
I motion to approve.
We have a motion by the Mayor Protem. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Councilmember Tamayo. Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Torres?
Aye. That pass and consent calendar passes unanimously for the items stated by the city attorney?
That then takes us first to item number 13, which is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2463, amending sections 2.30, 0.010, and 2.30, 1.130 of the Montebello Municipal Code to reinstate the Civil Service Commission and Chapter 2.44 of the Montebello Municipal Code to reinstate the Traffic and Safety Commission. That would also include waiving full reading of the ordinance. And that was Councilmember Peralta.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem Peralta, my apologies.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to first recognize and thank the local union members from Transit and Fire, as well as Painters and Allied Trades District Council 36, the Los Angeles Labor Federation, which houses over 300 affiliated union and labor organizations, as well as the Los Angeles Council of Trades, that's affiliated with 48 local unions and district councils of 14 trades, for their, their support in reinstating the Civil Service Commission. I would like to just read, kind of to put, put on record as well for some concerns that have been raised from previous, previous comments that have been made in, in regards to this item. So California Government Code regarding establishing a civil service commission in municipal governments, Title IV, Government of Cities, Division Five Employees, Chapter One, Civil Service, Article One, the system. Provision 45000 states that it is in the intent of this chapter to enable the legislative body of any city to adopt such a personnel system, merit system, or civil service system as is adaptable to the size and type of the city. The system may consist of the mere establishment of minimum standards of employment and qualifications for the various classes of employment, or a comprehensive civil service system as the legislative body determines for the best interest of public service. As well as Provision 45001, by ordinance, the legislative body of any city may establish a personnel system, merit system, or civil service system for the selection, employment, classification, advancement, suspension, discharge, retirement of appointed officers and employees. California state law specifically gives legislative bodies on a municipal level the right to adopt a civil service commission, by which the city of Montebello has historically benefited from, from the late 1940s up until 2020. The protections and safeguards by the commission have historically, again, been benefited by employees that have worked here throughout Montebello for years that have passed. By reinstating the commission, the council is reinforcing the security of our employees, their rights and their jobs while providing an independent review to ensure that our actions as a city in these matters protect not only the employees, but also the city from any future liabilities. I would like to say that in recognition of some of the solidarity actions that we have seen throughout the week, this week, our region has witnessed teachers across the country striking for a better pay and working conditions. Today, I would like to recognize that and stand in solidarity with their cause, and also those in our community who are seeking for the, for us as city council to really uphold the labor standards, protections, and fairness that they, that our employees so deserve through the reinstatement of the Civil Service Commission. So I do encourage my colleagues sitting here today on this dais to stand in solidarity of our city workers. That concludes my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And looking across the dais, are there any other questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, is there?
I have several, thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez?
So I will be the first one to stand in solidarity, solidarity with all of our workers. As a reminder again, there were several city employees that filed claims of harassment against our mayor. Now, unfortunately, I'm not sure why this is, again, earlier we received an email along with Mr. Min Young's message, the gentleman from, from the trades. And what was really unfortunate to me was that it didn't seem that they had the real background information on what we currently provide for our staff. Now, for the first time in Montebello's history, we adopted MOUs, which both Ms. Peralta and Mr. Torres were against when they were first presented to us. As I was listening to the speakers, I did have to step out for a moment because, well, I had to step out. But I was listening to Mr. Barker. And when we talk about fair practices and everything he spoke about, Mr. I want to say I'm a little ashamed that you had the audacity to come and speak to us this evening. Because back in 2020, while I wasn't running for reelection, you were the president of the association at that moment. And I believe that the process of what you went about for your endorsement was very unfair and very disrespectful, not allowing some of the, some of the representatives, some of the members to participate in that, in that endorsement process. Also, what was quite disturbing is, two years later, to find out that the gentleman who now serves as the association, the president of the association, was actually, along with Ms. Peralta, asking one of my neighbors to run against me. And that's also quite disturbing. Now, we talk about being fair and providing protection for our employees, protections for our employees. And I would ask for our speakers tonight to speak to our HR director and to our city, or assistant city manager at the moment. We already have a service, civil service commission in place. And while MOUs were established for the first time in Montebello's history, this gave our employees the right to protections within those documents. Which, again, by the way, David and Scarlett did not, were very opposed to back in 20, 20, 2020. For years prior, the city did not use the civil service commission for specific things like this. So I think it's, it's, it's a bit of a conflict, or more than a conflict, when we have people on the civil service commission, like, like the woman who came and spoke earlier. She currently serves on the Personnel Commission. I know she takes a lot of, from the Montebello Unified School District, and I know she takes a lot of pride in saying that, but she's also bullied children. And I have her recorded. And Mr. David Torres and Georgina both have this recording. How dare you come and speak about being fair and everything you just spoke of right now. It's disgusting, Ms. Finbres. Min Young, I have always been a friend, I have always been a friend of labor. I, I have walked with our teachers, I have walked with the trades, I have walked with car wash shuttles, I have walked with SCIU employees, I have walked with UFCW, I have walked with every member of the, anybody that's been part of a labor group I have walked with. I have been a participant of civil disobedience, and I will always stand in solidarity with our workers. But currently, as we are sitting here right now, I believe that our employees have those protections in place. And if you talk to our HR department, and if you talk again to our city manager, everything that they've done up to this point, even, how many, how many bargaining groups do we have, Mr. HR Director? 10, okay. So we do have protections for the employees, right? Okay. So I would ask Mr. Torres if at some point, again, we could have, actually, you know what, Mr. City Attorney, didn't you at some point years ago give the opinion that the civil service commission wasn't necessary?
Ms. Jimenez, I'm gonna just say this because it's been an issue for the last four months, and it seems like now's an appropriate time to mention it. You often direct your comments to members of the audience, to staff, to the city attorney without asking permission from the chair to answer these questions. So if you can, first of all, just follow the process on how this goes as opposed to just shouting out people's names and asking for a response.
I'm commenting on the item, and it's really disturbing how twisted and how, how, it's disturbing.
Ms. Jimenez, you're out of order.
And again, just for the record, I am the biggest supporter of labor. I have walked the block and I would never go. And I'm the only person on the council, in addition to Mr. Melendez, that has stood up to make sure that the city staff, the city employees who have, again, filed these claims against you, Mr. Torres, are not felt like they have not been heard.
Ms. Jimenez, you're continuing disrespecting this chair, is a problem.
You've played deaf to their concerns. And the rest of my colleagues here, unfortunately, both females, have played deaf to the concerns of our city employees who have filed these accusations of harassment. Again, I am very opposed to the civil service commission because currently our employees have the protections that they have never had in place. And you can boo and you can boo repeatedly.
Ma'am, please?
I have a comment.
Mayor Protem, I just, I just do want to say something very quickly and, and kind of go on to address a lot of the inaccuracies of Ms. Jimenez. But I do want to say that, Ms. Jimenez, your poor behavior speaks a lot louder than the statement that you just made. Your disrespect of, your disrespect of this chair, your disrespect of our audience, and in trying to make some kind of statement is generally just an embarrassment to the, to the legislative process.
You disrespected our staff, David.
And you continue to disrespect this chair again. Ms. Jimenez, for the first, for the first time in four years have I seen you treat anyone this way in this chair. The personal animosity that you've shown and in so many of your actions.
It's not personal, David. It's disgusting what you guys do.
And you continue the same behavior. It's, it's really unfortunate. But to address just the inaccuracies of your statement and, and your selective memory on, on what happened here, you talk about being the first to stand in solidarity with our workers, and yet we have union representatives that represent tens of thousands and hundreds of thousands of workers, and you can't recognize their comments. You have been repeatedly made the statement over the years that we should look at the professionals and you're, and you're hearing from the professionals, those that represent labor day in and day out. And, and instead you choose to sit here and, and cherry pick a couple of comments among the vast representation that we see here in front of us. You talk about that we adopted MOUs for the first time in history and that Mayor, the Mayor Protem and I voted against it. If you want to talk about the actual comments that happened on that vote, and yes, I would say that I voted against it then, and if I could go back and vote against it again, I would do so. Because what you failed to recognize is that many of the provisions in the existing agreements that we have with those, with those labor groups were not in the comprehensive MOUs. These quote unquote documents that were supposed to be all encompassing were not. And I tried to approach you about this, and instead, you know, you tried to somehow insult me that going to a running group with a binder full of documents was somehow an insult and violating, you know, some, just, just your, your sphere of influence, I guess, that you carry into a lot of these public spaces and accuse people of harassing you. And, and then you go to attack employees and in their process and in their exercise of free speech and in the exercise of identifying the representatives that they, that they feel carry their interests. Now you sit here in chambers and you attack our rank and file employees. And so you, and you, so you ask people to very selectively talk to just a couple of people and, and get a very specific viewpoint as the bravery and the courage shown by the employees that, that serve, that have been of the frontline responders for COVID on our buses, that have been frontline responders for fire and, and for police and saying like, hey, this is something that we value and this is a right that we want to see reinstated. The, the, the blinders that you put on and the, frankly, the hate that you just, that just seems to come out is so unfortunate that it gets in the way of just regular legislation. Ms. Jimenez, I don't believe that you are even aware of the ordinance and exactly what the ordinance says. The one paragraph that we're adding this evening and the one paragraph that, that you're so vocally fighting against. And then also lastly, you know, to, to, to bring in things that are not relevant to the conversation is, is just, I feel that District Five is just really losing out on a large opportunity here. Please, if we can keep some order in council chambers here. But, you know, it's, if we can please keep order in council chambers, you know, I'm just going to conclude with this, you know, it seems that you could show up in someone's driveway and fight them, but you can't show up for our rank and file workers. With that being said, I will look across the dais and see if there are any other comments on this item. Appropriate comments would be preferred. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I motion to approve this item.
There's a motion to approve by the Mayor Protem. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
A second by Councilmember Tamayo. Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember Jimenez?
No.
Councilmember Melendez? Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Torres?
Aye. That is three ayes, one nay, and one abstain. Thank you to our workers and thank you to my colleagues for supporting a great working environment in the city of Montebello by reestablishing our civil service commission. Moving on to the next item that has been pulled, item number 16, authorization to issue a request for proposals for an environmental engineer to conduct a comprehensive review of the Brownfield area slash shape and road landfill and perform additional analysis as needed. I had just a very quick amendment to the RFP, if my colleagues would entertain. In the item, it says that the contract can be awarded to an engineer or a firm. And just to make sure that the way that we're addressing the issues here are really geared towards bodies that have the ability to take on this kind of task and have a breadth of experience, I would just like to ask that we remove any reference to individuals and that the RFP go out to engage in firms for, for this work. And so with that single amendment, I would ask for a, I'll make the motion to approve going to RFP with that one amendment.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez for the second. Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Torres?
Aye. Item 16 passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 18, approve, approve a professional services agreement, number 4080 with R&amp;S Overhead Doors of Commerce, Inc., for preventative maintenance and door repair services at the transportation facility. Is there a staff report? Ms. Peralta, you pulled the item?
Yes. I just had a question. I do see that the repair services will be costing $85,273. I did just want to inquire if this went, this item went out to, formally went out to bid?
So we went for formal bid and we got three quotes, and this was for preventative maintenance. And what was discovered, we had the company that won the bid essentially upon discovery that all these doors are now red tagged. And it's important for the shop because these stores is what holds everything together in our shop. And so knowing the thresholds, this is why we're here, for the additional monies, so we can proceed to refix and repair these doors. But it also comes with the preventative maintenance.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. It was an informal bid or a formal bid?
Formal bid, yes.
Okay. At this moment, that concludes my comments. At this moment, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the item?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Councilmember Jimenez. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Melendez, Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Torres?
Aye. The item passes unanimously. And lastly, from our consent calendar, item number 21, Payment of Bills, Adopt Resolution Number 2323, Approving the City Warrant Register of Demands dated March 22, 2023. And so I would ask that the item be approved, save for warrant number 599190. And so I will make a motion to that effect.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Jimenez, Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Torres?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. And with the consent calendar concluded, we will jump back to the top of business. And next up would be the MCAP Quarterly Report Update. I apologize. One second, Chief. Actually, we will take public comments on non-agenda items at this time.
At this time, anyone who submitted a card to the city clerk will be called upon. We have 30 minutes. The time now is 9:07. And so, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be appropriate to have the city clerk start that process.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Clerk?
Yes. First speaker is gonna be Rosa Tamayo, followed by Susana Gomez.
Renee. I hadn't seen her. I didn't know she was here.
Buenas noches. Yo soy Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening. I am Rosa Tamayo.
Señor David Torres, mayor and miembros del Consilio.
Mayor Torres and members of the city council.
Yo soy una activista comunitaria.
I'm a community activist.
Pero también siempre he trabajado en educación.
But I've also always worked in education.
Hay veces que a mí, cuando estamos haciendo los contratos de educación, pues es bastante dinero.
On my experience, whenever we're working on education contracts, we're dealing with a lot of money.
Pero hay veces que no estamos muy de acuerdo o no me cae bien cualquier persona.
But there are times where we all don't agree or we don't all get along.
Pero trato de que el contrato salga bien.
But I'm focused on ensuring that the contract comes out right.
Pero siempre tengo algo abajo de la manga.
But I always have something under my sleeve.
Yo quisiera que ustedes trabajaran lo mejor posible.
I wish for all of you to work as best as possible.
Mire, mayor. David Torres?
David Torres?
Estás haciendo violaciones bajo corrupción y no tiene valor porque estás forzando todas las ordenanzas en la municipalidad.
You are working under coercion because you're working on many of the ordinances in the municipality.
Rennebo Badilla tiene 64,000 o más residentes, habitantes en Montebello a su responsabilidad.
La primera era un nombre?
Rennebo Badilla.
Oh. Rennebo Badilla has more than...
64,000...
64,000.
Habitantes...
Inhabitants.
En Montebello.
Residents in Montebello.
A su responsabilidad.
Under his responsibility.
No lo toques más porque la población va a responder.
Do not touch him any further because the community will respond.
En la pasada junta...
In the last meeting...
Violentaste los derechos civiles del gobierno federal de los empleados.
You violated the federal rights of employees.
Y eso no está bien.
And that's not right.
Fue un insulto para el federal.
It's an insult to the federal laws.
Aunque yo sé que pides... Pides a... Hablar con tu abogado.
Even though I know that you're consulting with your lawyer...
Pero yo no sé si tú pones atención en lo que él te dice.
But I don't know if you're paying attention to what he's advising you.
También, yo vivo en el sur de Montebello.
Also, I live in the southern part of Montebello.
Estoy escuchando el proyecto que tienen de metro.
I've been listening to the project, the metro project.
Pero cuando se decidió a votar para arreglar las calles del sur de Montebello...
But when it was voted upon to fix the streets in southern Montebello...
Tú no votaste.
You didn't vote.
Y tenemos la bluff en muy mala situación.
And Bluff Street is in very poor condition.
Son unas condiciones muy malas.
They're very horrible conditions.
La calle.
The street.
Así que primero, antes de cualquier... De cualquier aprobación para el metro...
That's why before you even consider any approvals for the metro...
Deben de cerciorarse que las calles estén de la mejor condición y que la gente que podamos caminar, porque no se puede caminar en esa calle.
You should be assessing the...
Y en otras tampoco.
You should be assessing the conditions of the street because right now pedestrians have a hard time walking.
Yo siempre les estoy diciendo que hay hombres anónimos, y estos hombres anónimos son personas que viven dentro de una casa, pero no son dueños de esa casa. Pagan una renta.
I'm always sharing that there's many homeless people who live in a home and they're paying rent.
Y ellos estudian y trabajan.
And they study and work.
Y tienen sus vehículos.
And they have their cars.
Y también va... Va a perjudicar este proyecto. Así que estudienlo bien porque es mucho carro que está estacionado en la calle.
Because this is gonna affect... Repitenlo otra vez.
Que en la calle hay mucho carro estacionado.
Oh, there's a lot of streets parked in... There are a lot of cars parked in the streets.
Es el problema del parking. Pero está por hombres anónimos.
But it's because of homeless residents.
Así que tengan conciencia y no estén haciendo las cosas nomás por hacerlas.
Please have some conscience and don't just do things just to do them.
Porque yo estoy poniendo ojo en todo.
Because I'm watching everything that you're doing.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Susana Gomez, followed by Jesse Garcia. Susana Gomez? Next speaker, Jesse Garcia. Next speaker, Cecilia Lopez. Next speaker, Margot Eizer. Very well, thank you. Next speaker, Bill Paliso. Perfect. Followed by Rosemary Torres.
Good evening. Bill Paliso, South Montebello. Really glad I put this under general comments, pertaining to the Civil Service Commission. Past council meetings, I listened to city staff come up here with every excuse why not to bring it back. And you have to really think on why. Well, let me tell you why. There's a narrative. You can't control the narrative when you have an independent body for checks and balances. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rosemary Torres, followed by Yvette Fembris.
Good evening, mayor and city council and staff. Rosemary Torres, South Montebello also. Today, the tornado hit, and I wanted to say thank you to all the residents that called me and were concerned about my safety. I felt so good to live in a community that cares about us. And I hope that they called other residents in the south side too. So I just wanted to say that, that I'm pleased that I live where I live because people are concerned. They opened their home to me even though I didn't need it because I wasn't affected. But they all reached out. They reached out from Atlanta, Texas, and Arizona, and Nevada. I felt so blessed. So, thank you. I wanted to say something positive after everything tonight. It was uncomfortable. Thank you again.
Next speaker is Yvette Fembris, followed by Linda Nicholas.
Good evening, Mayor Torres, Mayor Protem Peralta, and councilmembers. I'm here tonight speaking in my personal capacity and First Amendment right as a Montebello resident. I want to share my concern with the decline of city service and the hostile environment created here at City Hall, in my opinion, by the city manager. During this tenure of his leadership as a city manager, City Hall has become a place where residents are not feeling welcomed. I and others find the atmosphere at City Hall and the city administrative staff unapproachable and hostile in their demeanor towards residents and by some even harassing. For example, in my humble opinion, the public information officer is demeaning, hostile, unfriendly, and threatening to residents and council members with comments he has made publicly several times to council. He even felt it was his role to defame the character of a Montebello resident during public comment. If he and other staff members who come to the city council to make hostile and harassing public comments and are unwilling to work and accommodate our residents' needs and council members' requests, whom we elected to keep them accountable, then maybe our city is not the right fit for them. They serve at our pleasure, not us serving theirs. All the more reason to have a Civil Service Commission to ensure hires are vetted through merit and fitness and are the right fit to serve our community. What I want to implore to council is when it comes to time to evaluate, please know I and many other residents are displeased with the decline of service and the erosion of a once-open and friendly city hall. City Hall now reeks of personnel in the administrative roles who have created an unhospitable environment, and I believe that starts from the top with the city manager. Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda Nicholas, followed by Maria Knox.
Good evening. My name is Linda Nicholas, co-founder of Match9640. On March 13, myself and two other ladies went to the location of a teleconference of Peralta. Ms. Peralta was in violation per teleconferencing laws of the Brown Act. I was told about the post on Facebook, which was cute. They don't scare me. But the law states each location must be accessible to the public. Should members of the legislative body who wish to use one of the above exemptions should notify and contact the agency's legal counsel before attending remote meetings, which Peralta did not notice anyone that she had, in fact, COVID, which I doubt. We took photos of the lack of notices posted legally at her front door that someone opened an inch. Not Peralta. She refused to open the door. She said one word, COVID. Door was open an inch. Inside was totally dark. No meeting could be heard or ongoing. Peralta should not have been able to vote. You were told she was not there, but the proper authorities have been noticed. Torres, I heard residents and business owners come up speaking out against you over and over. Understand, we, the community, are not happy with your lack of leadership. You have a few fans that are rawrrying, but no. Your inconsideration towards staff and employees is obvious. We, the residents, do not approve of your treatment of them. When both your chiefs come up here and spoke, asking you to not pass this ordinance, and you hampered their ability to hire more police officers or firefighters, you totally ignored them. It showed so much disrespect for the chiefs and the directors who came to speak before you. Shame on you. Apparently, the speaker that spoke mentioned all the lawsuits. What about the 17 complaints against you, Torres? What about the abuse of you keeping employees till 1:30 in the morning, working 18 and 1/2 hours straight without a break? I'm gonna get a list of all the unions that were rawrrying this and make them aware of the treatment you give the employees. See, some of these employees are union members. I don't think the union's gonna be happy when they realize all the abuse that their employees, their members, have taken by you. Also, remember this. Every single ridiculous resolution and time change for a certain person that I don't even know if she's still working there anymore that you've done will be reversed once you're gone. And we, the community, will celebrate because very soon it will happen.
Next speaker is Maria Knox, followed by Tila Gregorian. The next speaker will be Tila Gregorian. After Tila Gregorian, will be Alexandra Brizano.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Tila Gregorian. My address is on file. And good evening, city staff and city residents. I've noticed that we've been having a lot more people attending these meetings. That's what you see. It really means that the community is really getting more involved in our city, which is wonderful. But I was... I have some notes here. Oh. Somebody's already addressed that. But let me remind you. I'm here on Renee Obadiah. I hope that he is coming back to work in Montebello because I know some of you councilmembers were not very present to him, and he's out on medical. I wonder why. And it's... I believe that we have enough lawsuits against our city. And I think you, as representing our city, should really behave yourselves and be a little more considerate of others, the city employees also. I'm sure they don't have the best-paying jobs. So at least treat them with respect and dignity. And do not expect more from them that you should get. They're not your secretaries. They work for the whole city. They work for all of the council members, not just you, Mr. Torres. So you need to be a little more considerate. I know that you think because you're sitting there that you're untouchable, but you're not. Nobody is in our city, especially someone that does not respect other people. It's been an ongoing game with us, coming up here and trying to make you realize that your conduct is really unacceptable. And you're sitting in the chair. That doesn't mean you're God. Don't forget that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alexandra Brizano, followed by Edward Franco.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I just... I have a request to make, but it starts with a question. Where is our city manager? He hasn't been here. And for an outsider like me that attends these meetings, the question is why? And I could only guess, I think that he can't tolerate taking direction from you, Mr. Mayor. He didn't like you. He targeted you when you were a council member. Every time you asked for transparency, I mean, there was like vindictive repercussions that you suffered a lot. So my question is, then, can you trust him? Can you sit down in a conference room with him, conduct business, steer our city in the right directions, reach, you know, to get our goals or whatever? Can you do that? Can you work with the man? Or are you going to be constantly worried that he's going to accuse you of harassment or intimidation? Or take advantage of any opportunity to sabotage you? So, Mr. Mayor, I think you should know by now, if you can work with our city manager, you should know, especially because he's sending you signals, he's not here. He refuses to be under your authority, right? So my request is that we get past this quarrel and that we, you know, solve it or end it. I don't want to go through more years like we did with Francesca. What was her name? Tucker Schuler, right? We paid her for five years, and she barely worked for two years, okay? I don't want to go through that. And, Mr. Mayor, don't prolong this matter. Please assess whether or not you'll be able to work with our city manager and make a decision. And council members, please, you also assess, can these two men work with each other? Can they move us forward? And make your decision, whatever it is. But please, let's move us forward. That's the request. And with that, I conclude my comments. Thank you.
Next speaker is Edward Franco, followed by Linda Strong.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, staff. As we all know, we had our little miss happen in the city today, a tornado. But I happened, I happened to be there. And speaking with some of the business owners in the area, we all spoke and talked and were very happy to see the city come together with the other agencies. I saw the police chief, the fire chief, the assistant city manager, and several others from the staff there. And we all kind of mentioned how well they all seem to work together. And we were all very happy and positive about that. As I sat there and thought about it, I also realized that the majority on this council is just trying to disrupt that. Somebody just came up and mentioned how unhappy they are with the city manager. I personally don't see why. I mean, I've seen nothing but positive things myself. So to see a disruption in the team, an extremely good team that we have, puzzles me. And I continue to see it time and time that it's going on. Again, somebody said, we need to figure this out. We need to put it together. Can we work together? I personally spoke to the mayor and spoke to the city manager. And I tried to get something so where we can all talk. And unfortunately, and the city manager said I'd be happy to. The other person that I spoke to was happy to. I was happy to. Unfortunately, for some reason, the mayor did not want to. I, I just want to see us work together. I'm trying to put something together to see if we can work together. Why that's not happening, I don't know. Hopefully, we can get together soon and make something happen. Because I think we've got a great team. And I think if we work together, you know, this could be a really good thing for everybody, everybody up there and for the city. But we've got to work together. So hopefully, we can do that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda Strong.
Well, I'm going to talk about something a lot more positive than what we've been hearing the last half hour or so. I want to talk about parks and green space. I have brought for the council something that I've been saving since 2020 during COVID, when I wasn't able to attend meetings. And it's a Parks Guide from the city of Irvine. So I'll present it in a moment. It says here, "Master Plan for Parks." "One-third of Irvine is preserved for parks, trails, and open space. Irvine has more recreational facilities per resident than any other large California city. Home values near parks and natural open space are 10% to 32% higher." Sadly and unfortunately, in the last 30 or 40 years, the community spirit that way back actually established parks, established the City Park, established Grant Ray, several other parks, that has been totally lacking over and over. Council majorities and council majorities have frankly shown favoritism to developers and not shown concern for parks, open space, and the well-being of residents. I spoke a couple of weeks ago about the Montebello Hills project. The only there, I said there are no parks up there. What I was trying to say is that we, those of us who fought to have parks up there, were hoping to get a park 20 to 80 acres, something like the Shabaram Park out in Hacienda Heights. The only reason there's any park up there is apparently there's going to be three-quarter acre parks for residents only, residents only. And then one three-and-a-half acre park with an acre-and-a-half parking lot, which only will be up in the hills because of one council member, Kathy Salazar, who made it clear she would not vote for the project if there wasn't a park for the public. In fact, the developer hadn't intended to put any public parks. We saw no other council majority members show any concern for the rest of us, even though the old City General Plan from the 1970s said that they looked to the hills to repair the lack of parks in the city. And unfortunately, preference for developer, preference for developer, preference for developer happened over and over. There is still a potential open space that can be saved in this city. I've spoken with David Siznowski, your Parks Director, about this. There, this is a time when due to the measure, I think it was A for LA County and other measures, there is money available to try to get parks. I wanted to pass this over to the council. Thank you.
Mayor, that does conclude all the speaker cards for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk, and thank you to all of our speakers this evening. Chief, I think we're ready for you now for the MCAP Quarterly Report update.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council. So before you talk about the city of Montebello's strategic approach to addressing homelessness and before our deputy director takes the presentation, I just want to say that some for us to key in here is that all to be said that this is all happened in two and a half years and during a pandemic. The accomplishments that you'll be seeing. Also, one of the speakers that was here, she had to leave because she had a six-month-old baby, was a young lady that was here. Staff intervened not that long ago. She was homeless, living in a car with her three children. And she couldn't wait to speak, but unfortunately, her little baby was getting fuzzy. So it just goes to speak of the endless hours of staff and time that goes into this community. You know, staff does so much that it just amazes me. And it goes to the caliber of people that we're hiring, how much they really care for our residents, our community, and the unhoused and the mentally ill. I could tell you that being part of this community for over 35 years and seeing what I'm seeing, combining paramedicine with social work and seeing the results that we're getting, it is amazing. It's amazing. And I think we're a model for a lot of surrounding cities. And it's just, I could go on because, you know, I'm very passionate about this and I love this community. I love what we do. But I'm going to turn it over to our deputy director. And like I said, if you could just kind of, all this to say in two and a half years is just to me is amazing, so.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. Yeah, I don't know how to use it. Okay. You got it? Okay, next. So one of the things that we wanted to speak about is not just MCAP. I think because I've been given the duty to work on the homeless, the city of Montebello's homeless plan, I want to take in consideration all the efforts that have gone, you know, into addressing homelessness and those at risk. So one of the things that I really think that the city has already done has been the ability to invest in addressing, you know, our health, social, and economic factors among vulnerable populations. We look at equity and access and, you know, those are important things in order for our homeless to thrive. I think not only is it cost-saving when we're doing some of this, it's life-saving. Recently, we have lost some of our homeless because of the weather. And normally, I just want to say that, I think the other day I was pretty depressed, thinking like, you know, we weren't able to help one of our clients that was severely sick and passed away of pneumonia last week. So it really makes me think of that the work that's being done is to save lives. Most of our homeless lose, or anyone who has this type of stress, their life expectancy reduces. So they live less, you know, years because of the situation. So in looking into that, we try to put best practices forth, evidence-based approaches in combination. One of the things that we are doing here is that we're using a multi-tier approach in order to impact several areas. We are using also the Health People 2030 Framework, which is addressing health equity and social determinants of health through Healthy People 2030. So some of the things that we found, and it's not in any special order of importance, but they're all important. It's improving mental health, mental health and mental health disorders, reducing drug and alcohol addiction, promoting health and safe home environments, you know, helping people earn steady incomes and benefits that will allow them to meet their health needs and even basic needs, improve healthcare access and coordination. So one of the things that we do want to come back, I'm just inserting like a commercial for you guys, is that we actually went out and started to survey. We've been working on this for a while. We conducted a community survey. We went out to, you know, churches, the, you know, food pantries and other locations to get surveys completed in order to see what our community thinks about, you know, the homeless services, or do they know about them? Or what other things that their perception in terms of what homelessness is. And in addition to that, I've always been a strong believer that those we serve need to have input in the process because we can come up with a perfect idea, but it doesn't mean it's going to work. So for the first time, we actually worked on getting our first count in the city, just not loss account, but our own count. And we actually interviewed every participant and got data to share. So we were hoping to bring not only the plan, but the homeless count to you guys to review and hopefully adopt the plan with that so that you can hear what our homeless had to say and their needs. What do we, so during the time we had our task force, which we're going to continue because now we're really eager to look at a lot more things that we're finding, like the chief said, two and a half years. I actually had to look at this for a while, you know, the presentation and really think, you know, when I started with the team and everything we've done to bring, you know, some of the, you know, things highlight what's happening in our homeless community and not just in our homeless community, but even the ones that are housed. So we are looking at, obviously, a one step closer. We want to work on this task force. We have community members, consumers, as you see, one of them came tonight to speak, social service, healthcare providers, so that we work together to address those needs. So some of the multi-tier strategies that we're looking in addressing homelessness, the first one that was actually implemented already here in the city was the Police Department's Mental Health Evaluation Team, which is a partnership with the Department of Mental Health and addresses basically what we call holes or needs to take someone when they're, you know, in crisis. And this program actually supports, you know, those that are housed as well. The next program that we sort of implemented was MCAP, the Montebello Community Assistance Program, which we used through the Fire Department and in response to a different model that looking at homelessness through a health lens. Our next process that, as we continue to work in looking at the needs, is the Operation Stay Safe, looking at the need to house the people immediately, especially if they were coming out of hospitals or they needed a place to rest and get care. The next one we're working on, which we just started, is Your Home Initiative. And I'll talk about each of these programs. And recently, we were happy to develop a partnership with the Beverly Hospital and working on creating a coordinator in the ER room or in your department so that clients can get referrals or hold them there and then we can get the connections instead of them walking out to the street. Obviously, our departments are housing, community services, and recreation, you know, and public works, you know, our interdepartment, as we're working together, it's not, you know, one person. It takes a lot. So here's our med team. And the mental health crisis, obviously, there's a description here about, you know, the 5150s that normally happen, working in collaboration. They have that ability to do that when there's someone in need of it that has a harm to themselves or others or are gravely disabled. So we're lucky to have that program. And again, just a little bit about them is a co-response team with an officer and the DMH Mental Health Clinician who respond to these 911 calls that involve mental health crisis. We partner all the time. We work together because sometimes we have clients that need that service or they need a longer provider, and that would be us. I know Corporal Parks, he now moved from the med team, but now we have Officer Jennifer Meadow, who started, and we're excited to be working with her. One more. Sorry. So anyway, the, we'll talk a little bit more about, obviously, the MCAP program. I wanted to highlight a timeline as to when the program started and how we've been trying to work in the clients that we've served throughout that time. Obviously, we came on board 2020, looking in the fiscal years. And formally, the program wasn't launched until December 2020. So it was really six months into that fiscal year. But during that time, we really, COVID was here, and most of our services were to address, you know, basic needs and other related to COVID. So the team conducted 159 outreach contacts and case management was provided to 83 individuals, a total of 75. So the case management is duplicated numbers. The second year, we began more of our outreach, obviously, and case management services were provided during that time. And we provided services to 94 unduplicated clients. We also started doing the One Step Closer Community Survey, and the homeless count was going on. During this time, right now, this current fiscal year, which is not obviously over, we have actively 68. we have actively 68 participants throughout. We were thinking that maybe there's some goals to explore for the coming years. Maybe those might change, but definitely mental health, substance abuse treatment, family services, more housing and housing availability and development, senior supportive services in homeless, again, a prevention plan that would come around that time. These program findings are not research-based, they're more based on observations that we have done now that we're out in the streets. We actually try to work on weekends or nights to, to get a better perspective of what's going on. So during obviously the first year, we had COVID-19, we did a lot of emergency outreach. We did prevention and basic needs. So we did a lot of safety kits. We went into encampments because there was no shelters to, to go visit or to refer anyone. So a lot of it happened that they were hiding in areas like encampments. So then again, we conducted the homebound vaccine outreach program and we learned that there was a segment of the city that can't leave their homes and sometimes needs, needs care. So we actually conducted this program and, and met with our seniors, providing them vaccines at home. So that was, I learned a lot and they always teach me a lot. So again, the program got launched in December. The next year, we started noticing obviously housing was a big continuum of the need. Not only are we addressing, but we have to stabilize sometimes the clients. So Operation Stay Safe came about. We increased emergency shelter, which could be a night at a hotel or any other need. We increase, you know, our partnerships in mental health. And we also started looking at, at the population that, you know, we were seeing more addiction and substance abuse with the, with the population related to health conditions. We also saw spike in unhoused seniors and veterans. And so that year, we started also moving aggressively towards sustainability and funding to bring money to the city of Montebello that is out there and that we have, you know, could benefit from. So we also started participating in supporting our fire depart, our fire teams in on-call structured fires when there was a home displacement. So in a structured fire, the on-duty B C could call us and on weekends, we're on call if something like that happens and we take care of the family that's being displaced that night. Obviously, there's a lot of trauma and a lot of things are happening, so they're not always thinking, you know, what's going to happen next. So we come in, in, and to support. The, this year, we're seeing a lot more chronic and ongoing mental health needs, increased need definitely for substance use services and treatment, developing additional services, Your Home Initiative, and developing these partnerships and collaborations. Transportation is a huge need among this population. Job training has come in this year because now we have Operation Stay Safe. So now we can do more referrals for them. They shower, they go to interviews, they do more things that, you know, to get them integrated into the community. We have seen an increase in call volume, not only for the homeless, but we actually have seen more across just in general in psychiatric issues and overdoses. So I think some of the things that we're thinking now is to come back and say, hey, we need, you know, maybe an additional staff as we're assessing. So these are things that we document to come back and, and look at. The most common health conditions that we've observed in our community is congestive heart failure, chronic obstruction pulmonary disease, hypertension, diabetes, asthma and neuropathy and HIV. So those are condition, those are the most common that we find among our population. And now for reporting on, on the, obviously, the second year of MCAP, we conducted 156 outreach, case management services were 204. Hopefully you can see the, the graphs. And we served 94 unduplicated clients. We have about, in the groups, we actually serve between, I would say between the 35 to the 55, 64 is our biggest group in the population we serve. And we primarily serve obviously males, but we do have a large group in females. Majority are Hispanic, followed by white Caucasian, and we have small segments of, of our API in Asian population that we're serving. So what types of services normally the team is providing? The first year, we were providing a lot of showers, transportation to shower locations. And then the second year, even though showers were there, transportation to mental health facilities, to the DMV, social services, substance use services. We housed, we provided interim housing, shelter and other can be something else like their pets or helping them with things like that. A lot of our homeless do have pets. So we try to include them as part of the family. So this is where we're at today. Obviously, this data just is up to March 9th. We still would come back and report back for an additional, the last probably quarter for this fiscal year. We are looking at, again, a growing number of in, in, from 35 to 45 to 54. And also in 55 to 64 is probably the population that we are seeing the greatest. Again, we did see a reduction in serving our females so far, but in our males, population went up. And you'll see that we continue to serve a big Latino Hispanic population. And it could be because obviously we're in the area where majority of us are. The types of services that we saw again is transportation. The team does transport clients to follow-up appointments to doctors, tries to keep them adherent to psychiatric medication so they don't, you know, if they're in house, that they continue to be housed. So there's actually follow-up services to, to maintaining individuals housed. And if there's substance use services, one of the things that, that we'll talk about right now following is obviously the need for, for substance treatment is, is huge. So what's happening in Operation Stay Safe? So we're working obviously with regional partners. We're considering this a bridge to permanent housing. And we officially opened taking our first client in July 20th of 2022. So as you see, a lot has happened in the last couple of, a year or so. The goal was obviously, we were striving for a large number of 120 a year. But then you start learning and seeing, you know, and that's why it's important to collect the data so that we can see what needs are happening and, you know, can we meet that number or not? We have 30 units. At this time, almost a year into it, we are working with the Los Angeles, you know, oh my God, it's like La Cada, I call them, but they're an agency for alcohol and drug treatment. And they're right now co-located at tiny homes and they're serving all our clients and those giving them counseling or outpatient treatment services and also providing transportation to their appointments. So I think, as you see, it takes a, a lot of us to, to really address specialty services. And we continue to work with the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust and, and we have funding from the Los Angeles Chief Executive Office that we received. So Operation Stay Safe, these are the common services that the case manager provides onsite, what they're doing with them. So they do assessments. We wanted to at least give you a picture of what their, the services or referrals that they're being given while they're there. And the case manager is working in, you know, with us. So so far, we've served through the program 41 clients and there's been 25 exits towards, towards some form of housing or temporary housing. One of the things that we found is obviously housing or availability of housing is a huge issue. So we can put people in the tiny homes, but if we don't have where to exit them, that's a struggle. So one of the things that we started looking is, we recently applied for a grant with the San Gabriel Valley to get, we asked for a hundred thousand, but they started giving us a little bit more funding so that we could engage our landlords as a key component to obviously addressing homelessness. One of the things that we found out with our landlords is that obviously they want to support, but they don't know how. And sometimes they need help to, in order to continue, you know, supporting that person in that housing. So even though we're not a wraparound service team, we do try to provide support to our, to our landlords and follow up and check in with them. Of course, I wanted to also show through that, through this program, the cities that we're working with right now to house our homeless. So there's 14 clients right now in Montebello. We have Huntington Park, Long Beach, Los Angeles, Pico, Huntington Park, Maywood and South Gate. These are our engagement of our landlords in these, in the cities. So we're reaching out to other cities outside to, to support with the housing. In this program, what we're trying to do is obviously provide security deposits, rental assistance, landlord incentive for holding the units because they also would lose money if they have to, you know, hold it and not get paid while the client's getting ready with their paperwork. Unfortunately, the process for housing and paperwork is long and combobulated. So, so we do, and we have submitted obviously all the 41 applications and working to continue housing our, our clients. So in looking at some of the gaps in services that we have, we obviously have worked with the following providers, Beverly, Volunteers of America, La Cada, who's now co-located. And we also have another team with us that comes with us to do outreach and crisis support. So if MCAP can't take the client because we're dealing with another client, they also provide transportation and support. So the team doesn't leave the city. There's times that we leave the city and it's about four hours just out. So if somebody calls us, we're not around. It also happens to the med team. And one of the things that I always say our collaboration is with our homeless and our residents and community. What I learned in being in Montebello is that we belong to two spas. It's interesting. So we belong to Spa 3 and Spa 7. So I don't know if that will ever change or change or be updated, but for right now, we have access to funding from both spas. So we're lucky to, to have that. So wanted to show. And in fact, it, it falls like the fire, right? We have mutual aid with, with, within the areas, area E and C, which is exactly how we're with our homeless. I wanted to provide just a graph of where funding is, like these are all grants, where we're, where we're at, what we have received for these type of programs. Obviously, being in fire, we have a lot more, but this is specific to this, to these activities that we're discussing. So we're still pending one, but we were lucky to have the encampment resolution awarded. And we're hoping to, with the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust, that's ongoing because we're still working on Operation Stay Safe. So we're trying to, these expenses that come up, repairs and things like that, that they are trying to fund them and help us get the money. So I know I talked a lot, said a lot. So I, I like this approach because I, in 20 years of working as a social worker and out in the field, is that no single approach is the answer to addressing a problem. The unique needs and assets of each community must be considered. There's no one key solution or miracle that's going to, you know, so it takes a lot, a lot of work. And hopefully, this is something that I was able to present today, that all the different components that come in place to, to help stabilize someone. So any questions?
Thank you very much, Deputy Director, and thank you, Chief. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Jimenez?
No questions. I'm sorry that you had to wait this late, but thank you. Again, this is always everything I think that you've done from when you first started working on this project, something that's very dear, close to my heart. And I've shared this story before. Before my sister passed, she was just a car away from being homeless. And I always think about this and how had these services been available to our community back then, she would have probably, of course, been in a different place. But I love having, I, I loved seeing the faces of those children that were here. And one of the kids was waving at me and, and I asked Andrew if that was family and he's like, no. He said that was MCAP. And just to see how happy they looked. I've seen kids, I've, I've dealt with families like this before where they have two to three children living in the car. So thank you for, this is definitely beyond like a labor of love. With the partnerships that we've built with everyone that's helped us and the team get to this place, I commend everyone and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Councilmember Melendez?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Again, amazing work that you all do, proactive work. You know, there is, the need is going to continue, it's going to probably increase. And I know there's, City of LA has a big impact on that with all the, with everything they're doing over here. I know there's probably more of the unhoused population coming to this and I know there's probably neighboring cities as well. And I like the whole multifaceted approach. And again, just thank you for everything you do. My, my only question, what's, what's the correlation that you see in the increase in the substance abuse? Because I know you mentioned that there was more substance abuse, like what's, what's going on with that or, or is there any?
Well, it's an observation, obviously, you know, and we take down assessments and we do a more in-depth of what type. Obviously, fentanyl and meth are the biggest ones that our clients report using, but it's also the ones that we get called a lot through fire as well. We're getting, you know, those calls. So there is, and there is obviously an issue. And I think we have to keep an eye on that because if our clients are using it, I'm sure other people are having access to it that we don't even know. And that's when we talk about prevention efforts with our youth, even with our seniors and everyone, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melendez. Councilmember Thamayo?
Yes, thank you for this comprehensive presentation. It gives us a really good, it gives me a really good picture of what, what you've been doing. You're in the front lines and it's amazing too to see that this is in conjunction with our fire department. So both of you out in the front lines and doing this work. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor Protem.
Yes, first just want to express really my appreciation for the hard work that our chief, as well as you and Jelica, our deputy director and the whole MCAP team have really gone about in building and spearheading these initiatives that are, that are not, it's not just one program, it's multiple programs that really go about addressing the issues of homelessness, substance abuse and the many insecurities that, that our community members are facing. You, as similarly to what Councilmember Thamayo said, you all are on the front lines of these issues and that is a mental and physical and emotional toll that you all take in really addressing these very core issues in our community that many tend to look away or not necessarily, because not necessarily give it the, the seriousness and importance that, that, that it really actually deserves. And your efforts have really made a difference in the community members that have been served and seeing that there was family here today wanting to express their, their gratitude for that just speaks to that, as well as, you know, pictures of other residents or homeless residents we've seen who have actually gone into finding housing. So just want to express really my thankfulness and appreciation on behalf of the work that has been done. And as we move forward, kind of, I don't want to say leaving the pandemic behind, but we're still facing those issues of what the pandemic has caused economically and now going into a possible recession. We know that hunger insecurity, homelessness, substance abuse issues are issues that are going to continue be, to be on the rise. And to know that our community and the city of Montebello takes these issues seriously and that they, we are proactively addressing and creating. and that they, we are proactively addressing and creating programs to be ready for those issues, as we see those rises, I think provides us a level of security and overall gratefulness that, that we have those systems and programs in place. I would just like to ask, I know that this has been a question that has been brought up and I, I haven't been able to find it on the website, but is there like a helpline or a phone number on the website in regards to the Tiny Homes or MCAP services where those that are interested are able to call or at least get more information? Because I know that we have folks that want to be connected to these services or even partners regionally that want to learn more and figure out how to connect folks to these services and how, having that information, I think, is extremely crucial.
No, you're right. I, I think we need to look at our website and make sure that we have all the information, but my email's there and I do get a lot of emails from individuals that are homeless because they do have cell phones and they reach out. So I send those to our team. But we definitely get calls, even our firefighters. We recently got a call from our mayor. And just so you know, he's now a Tiny Homes mayor, one of the, the individuals. And, and I really appreciate the team because I know that probably people think that, you know, they get paid more, but they actually, some of them are just, they don't get overtime. We don't get overtime. And I think they invest because they care. And I always see how late they stay. We come on the weekends, we try to figure out, sometimes I'll joke around like I probably don't have a life, but I'm, here I am, you know, kind of like busying. We've done home visits, wellness checks, you know? We really enjoy meeting the, the residents of Montebello. And, and I've been in a city where I've noticed how many people care. And they donate to us, they give us items that we can share with our clients or other people who may need them, so. But I'll, I'll definitely look into that and posting, fixing it if it's not there.
No, thank you for your thoughtful response and anything that we can do on council level to be able to support those efforts and in creating some sort of hotline or in general, you know, some sort of contact mechanism. Please know that I'm sure my colleagues and I would be, would be supportive of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As the Assistant City Manager and I were talking leading up to this meeting, and she mentioned that we had a, a big presentation from MCAP coming up, I was wondering what that meant. In my mind, you know, I kind of had like some of the facts and figures of what we've seen over the last year, but really kind of tying together what all the different strategies that we're taking to address the unhoused crisis, really since the inception of the program, is a great refresher for myself. It's great to introduce to our newest member, Councilmember Thamayo. And as we approve agenda item by agenda item, we kind of see very thin slices of each of these programs. But just kind of putting it here all on one page, especially just looking at this multi-tier strategy sheet, I think that this is something that the, the city absolutely celebrates internally. I want to continue in bringing forward this, this oral and asking for these reports on a more regular basis. It's just to make sure that our residents are aware that the council and in conjunction with staff are taking the issue in Montebello very seriously. Just from the funding sheet, we've seen that over the last couple of years, we've invested over $6 million to address the unhoused crisis in Montebello, which is really unique for a city our size to take on in the way that we've taken it on. So unique, in fact, that very recently you were recognized on a statewide level by the League of California Cities for the social services that you provide. So, going to digest this a little bit more, definitely some great information in terms of these pie charts and seeing the different trends, how some mental health issues are, I, I believe I saw decreasing in one ways, but housing, we really see an expansion in terms of the number of people that were able to move into permanent supportive housing and, and get them those wraparound services. I think the, the one question that I've had, even before Operation Stay Safe was established and, and as it continues on, is just what that transition looks like from our tiny homes into, into stable housing? I mentioned at the time that one of my concerns was that you kind of have a lot of different issues when it comes to housing and one of them is the pipeline, right? You have a lot of, you have a lot of units that stay vacant, as you mentioned. Navigating the process, housing individuals in itself and the paperwork that's involved and the communications between various departments and entities can be very difficult. So I'm very happy to see this 20% conversion rate, but I was just wondering if you could describe a little bit more what some of the impediments are to, to moving the residents of Operation Stay Safe?
And, and it depends on the individual. I think you, you, we look at creating a plan that specialized for each person, so it's not a cookie cutter either. I can talk about recently a client that we had in a wheelchair and he, his access right there at the tiny homes, you know, we needed to find something quick. So we're working with like DHS, the Department of Health Services and other, you know, to transition and find something for him because he would need additional help, you know, as he can't really walk or move a lot and he's hunched. So I know the team were really hard and possibly in like five months was able to find a place in Monrovia, which specializes in, in supporting individuals with disabilities. And I actually, I was sharing with the chief that Sandra and I showed up at like 10:30 at night with his, they, MCAP did his laundry and we showed up to take his laundry because we had to move him in. He was worried and he didn't have any clothes and we got there at 10:30 at night to drop off. So sometimes those are some of the cases. There's, there's other, oh, there was a family with a disabled child that we also had to house. We don't have family units, which is what we're noticing an increase in families. So we had to house him somewhere else. And it's probably not the best, but it's all we can do. It took us six months just to, to help the family because one of the things that the team was working to is to increase their income. The child, because he, he's disabled, he was able to qualify for like SSDI and other things in, through Medi-Cal. And the mom actually, because she can't work and she has to be there 24/7, she's able to get what we call in-home supportive services. So she gets paid an additional money. The, the, the husband, they helped him by sending him to a job, you know, to get more income. So it's even helping them put all those financial, the dollars, you know, to pay for, for a place. And obviously, it's expensive, but sometimes it just depends what we need to do so they can sustain afterwards. Obviously, we don't, we want to make sure that they're able to, to take care of themselves and, you know, have that pride to do so. So it just really depends. Like, right now, the, the person you called, I think Chief called us, that you had observed somebody on the street on Friday and Jonathan came back. We put him immediate, he accepted help. He, he, sometimes they don't, but in this case, he did. And he addressed that, you know, he had a substance use issue. So in that case, we have to take care of that first. And then, so you may see that sometimes they have to stay a little longer at the tiny homes or in a facility and then we, once they come out, we take them back in so that now we can work, you know, on those things. So, that's why I say it's not really as simple as people think to, to navigate just one person. It takes, it's, it's time consuming.
Absolutely. And, and that's something that if we had more time, I would kind of touch on and ask you to explain further is that, you know, we see 200 contacts, but I mean, these are really intense interactions that you're having, you know, talking about transportation, taking them to the DMV, medical services. I did, don't want to add more on your plate. You guys definitely have your hands full, but just do want to encourage the city that, continuing down this line of addressing the unhoused crisis, as you guys come across any legislation that you think would support and facilitate some of the things that we're trying to accomplish here, you know, just making sure that that comes before council. So, you know, we can sign that letter and send it off to our county, state, and federal representatives to make sure that the policies that they're thinking of and enacting really address some of the issues that we're facing on a very local level. I mean, you guys have fantastic, fantastic first-person experience. I, I'm aware that recently, the County of Los Angeles had a Blue Ribbon Committee on Homelessness, kind of like reanalyzing what LASSA was about and the services that they provided. So in instances like that, you know, when it's like, okay, well, what are we doing here on Montebello and what, and what, you know, what would we like to see to support our, our mission? You know, this council definitely stands with you guys. So just, again, Chief, Deputy Director, thank you so much for the organization and for the services that you provide our residents. Before going on to the State of Police Services, Ms. Salazar, just wanted to ask, because we still have a little bit of closed session to address really quick, and we still have the receiving file for the ACFER, would it be okay, are there, is there any issue with continuing item number 12 to the next meeting? Okay. And then, Mr. City Attorney, if we need to make a motion to that effect, we can do that at that time. And this is item number nine, the State of Police Services.
I think we have a PowerPoint. Good evening, Councilmembers. Wanted to start off here today and just let you know, you know, there's quite a bit in here and some of it's not detailed. I'll try to get into as much as I can. But anything you do want to know or learn on any of these, I can probably spend an hour or more, several, you know, just explaining certain things to you, right, and kind of where we stand. But I wanted to get to you. I've been here just about a year almost, it'll be about three weeks, it'll, it'll be a year, right? So I've been able to assess myself of kind of where the police services are. So that's what, what I'll talk about, kind of where we were, where we are now, where we'd like to go, and also in those terms, discuss our, our personnel and some of the other things that, that we'll need, where we were, where we're at, and what we'll need kind of in, in, in the future, based on my thoughts on kind of what's best for the city. So if we'll go to the, to the, to the first slide. Oh, I'm sorry, you went up. That's it. Perfect, perfect. So I'll start off with something that's very important. I think it goes to all public servants, but I know for police, definitely mission, vision, values as our foundation. I think as any of us, as, as public servants, right, we have to start with that as the foundation because if we don't keep that as a solid foundation, our officers, myself, you know, when we, when we make it about our anger or about other things, we tend to go sideways, right? And that's where things go. You know, we've seen large-scale incidents happen over in, in Tennessee, other areas, and, and just across the board, right? So if you don't have that as a foundation, that, that's where everything goes wrong, right? So I try to instill that in my officers every day. And on my decisions, when my decisions are going off or I'm making it about something that's not consistent with mission, vision, values, I try to bring myself back to that. And, and I'm not perfect because I get emotional, I get, I get upset, right? But for, for the officers, it's critical. One of the really things I, I like, or actually I love is our motto, dedicated to superior service, right? It's not just protecting and serving, it's dedicated to superior service, right? And then you can read the mission right there. The mission of Montebello Police Department is to provide effective and professional police services of the highest quality in partnership with the citizens we serve, encouraging mutual respect and innovative problem solving, thereby improving the quality of life for our community. You know, a lot of key words thrown out there, respect, innovation, quality of life, right? And, and that's the, you know, those are some of the keys for, for any agency, but for sure, Montebello, because it's written in here even before I got here, right? And I definitely want to try to keep moving forward on that. If you go to the next slide, I talked a little bit about vision, right? Mission, vision, values as either as a triangle or as the foundation. But to place our officers in the best position possible to keep the community safe by leveraging technology, community engagement, and providing the best training and equipment possible, all consistent with our core values in the Constitution, right? And, and when we talk our values, right, whether it's in our personal lives or whatever else, if, if we don't have that, it, it's, it doesn't mean anything when you lose that. But for us, it's quality, service, integrity, compassion, and pride. On the next slide, please. So 100 years old is, or a little over 100 years old, right? I got here a little bit after the centennial, but definitely, I won't get into the, into the slide a whole lot, but there is a tradition of service here from what I've have found out here, even more than in LA City. Your community, our community is, has a lot of pride in their FIRE department, their police department, the city and how it's run. And people get very passionate about that, even on the dais here, right? Because I think we are proud of, and we all want the best for it. And I definitely know the officers in our department have that. Kudos to Brad Keller for, for keeping that going on as a longtime Montebello person. But I've, I've really come to appreciate that here is the pride and the tradition that this city has. So if you go to the next outline, the next slide, it'll give you a quick outline of what I'll talk about here, kind of like, as I've stated earlier, what we've done as far as community engagement, officer safety, technology, training, school resource officers, recruitment and hiring. I'll talk a little bit about our workload and our response time. I won't get too much into that, right? Because there are nuances within that, but again, I'm available to discuss where we are now, what we have, and then what we plan to do and kind of how many we need, right? And that would be over like a five-year period. Obviously, I, as you know, we, we, we would all love to drive Ferraris, but in the end, if we can only afford to have a house and a Toyota, as long as we're getting what we need out of that, it's, it's important. So, so I do understand there's limited budgets, but we'll be working within whatever we're given and trying to reach out for that. If you go to the community engagement, so since I've been here, we have one person right now signed a community engagement. So we've done, we've done well, but we can do a lot better. I know some of you here are more active on it. So I really want to build on that. I think we can touch so many people, both inside and outside of Montebello, that we're not hitting. So I want to increase on that social media presence. Right now, we're looking, we have, we're already kind of split up into districts and our district lieutenants. I want to build on that so that each lieutenant has an officer assigned to social media. So our different teams and watches are putting out relevant information, right, on a timely basis. So we're lacking in that area, although we've done better and we're not bad for a department. We can definitely improve on that. Participation in, in city events, since I've been here, I've made it a concerted effort to make sure that our department and our officers are out there engaging the community just on the city partnership events, right? Summer Street Fest, the holiday tree lighting where we've had booths, city job fairs, Read Across America, which is, was very successful, and several neighborhood watch meetings. I will touch on a little bit more, I'd like to increase that, right, to where we're having a neighborhood watch meeting in each of your districts, right, is, which is, is my goal, right, with you speaking at that, also bringing in the other city entities. Director Sisnawski and I already have discussed how his, his parks, part-time staff would help out with that and also bringing in the other city entities, right? Because we talked a little bit about, or I mentioned it earlier, about problem solving. Police department can't do it alone. I can really appreciate what MCAP is doing, I can appreciate what Public Works can do for us. But the more we bring in to help us do our jobs as far as the police department, the more we can focus on straight communities, community safety and then predators that are out there doing heinous crimes, that we can take those people out of the community by focusing, by, by, we can help out with quality of life issues, but getting, again, like MCAP, our MCAP personnel out here. And I sing, I sing MCAP's praises every time that I can, right? I sit on the County EMS, Emergency Medical Services Commission, right, where they're discussing different options for these issues. And I think the paradigm shift is with programs such as MCAP, right? And I can go on because there are other areas where I, I don't think we do enough within local governments. I think we put a lot on our, our police departments, but we're, we're looking at those models. So I'm very happy to work with them on that. As far as the community events hosted by us, we have National Night Out, we've had the Bicycle Rodeo, Christmas Lunch with the Chief, Christmas Toy Drive and, and Distribution, which was a, a very fantastic event. I know you all participated. It was wonderful seeing the kids and the lives that we were able to at least bring some smiles to those people. So I really want to build on that for, for the next few years. Your active shooter trading with our schools, our churches, some of our businesses, again, another area where I think we, we need to expand on. And then also recognize our own fallen officers and, and the memory of Officer Henry Acuna, who our park is, is named after, who paid the ultimate price. So we make sure we do that. When it comes to safety and, and, and equipment, right, and we say officer safety and equipment, but that also means community safety and, and equipment. Because we're keeping the community safe, we're lowering our, our, if, if we have the right equipment and we're focusing on, on our safety, we're lowering our uses of force... safety, we're lowering our uses of force, both our significant uses of force and our shootings, or we never want to hurt anybody, right, but if we can minimize those contacts that we have with the community members, with suspects, the better we are, the safer we are, the safer the community is. So when I got here, we had fewer 40-millimeter, less lethal launchers, it's basically a sponge round, right, and that's not to be used, it's to be used in place, ideally, in place of a handgun, so only the sergeants were taking those out if we had them out, so now every black and white, we were able to purchase more of those, so every black and white has one, right, I was out on a call when I first got here with an officer, right, and we had an issue with a person suffering from mental illness who was walking around with an edged weapon, and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, okay, so, all we had was the beanbag, we had to wait till the sergeant got there trying to de-escalate the situation with a 40-millimeter, luckily, we were able to take him into custody, but that's a situation where you want these less lethal weapons systems to help save a life, right, or to prevent any further hurt to the community. Red dot optics for our handguns, right, you're thinking lethal weapons systems, however, when it does come down to a situation where someone is trying to hurt another community member with a knife, with a gun, with hands, that we need to act, or they're trying to hurt the officer, or if it's one of your family members, right, we want to be sure that we're precise and accurate, that red dot optic system is a precise tool to have to make us more accurate in that, right, if we're talking about a shoot, mass shooting at a school, and we need to take action, or like what happened at Monterey Park, that accuracy makes a big difference, right, because of your background and who is there, so we've also recently just approved those for the officers. 11 new police vehicles, it goes to, again, making us more efficient at what we do, a lot of our vehicles, 150, 160,000 miles that we need to time out, I think my car has 120,000 miles on it, right, so they're well-needed to get us doing to what we need to do, and it also goes to morale, all those things go to morale, right, because the officers need the tools and they recognize that. New first aid bags and equipment that we're able to get in via a grant, which is critical, right, that goes hand-in-hand with the Narcan, or the Narcan for overdoses, right, for community members, and also officers that are exposed to that, lives are being saved with those types of tools, and replacing those in a timely manner. We have new unmanned aerial vehicles, we had a couple last year that we purchased, we have three that I think were just approved, $57,000 worth, we'd like to expand on those, the technology does get old after five years and they get warned, we were able to use one of our unmanned aerial vehicles at the scene of our tornado area earlier to do a site assessment on the damage, and it's fantastic what those tools can do when used appropriately. For future use, what we'd be looking at on the next, I'm sorry, I'm going, I'm talking on and on here, medical evacuation vehicle. So on incidents such as Monterey Park and school shootings and other areas, or even where we have someone and we have victims down, and we need to get the fire department in there, right, these are vehicles that we would take in to help take our victims out, right, or try to get to a location to do an assessment in a better way, and again, it's not the, it's not a tank, it's not to be used as a ram, it's to be used as a medical evacuation, so we'll be looking for funding, grants, whatever we can with the fire department, with Montebello Unified School District, to try to get one of those vehicles. Mobile community command post, I'm not sure, I don't think it was out there when you got out there mayor, but we had to bring out the Area E, which is shared by like eight different agencies, our mobile community command post vehicle, it would be great if we could have our own here, not just for situations like today, when it's needed for the emergency situations, also in situations where I can use just for community outreach, right, so if I'm taking that command plus vehicle and I'm parking it out at the Montebello Town Center and trying to do either recruitment or outreach, or a drive that maybe the city council wants to get done on whatever issue, or whatever it is, right, it's a great community outreach tool in addition to the emergency use that we can get out of it, so we're looking for funding on that. Ballistic door panels, right, that goes to officer safety. We will soon be purchasing some less lethal pepper ball weapons, basically a gun that fires pepper balls. I mentioned earlier about the 40-millimeter sponge round, so what the pepper balls do, if it's at the end of a pursuit where you've seen these on the news, and we need to get somebody out of a vehicle, or we need to go in, right, instead of going in with guns, if we know that they're in there and not getting out, we're able to use the pepper balls as opposed to some other deadly, or not deadly, but heavier type of force, right, and that goes to different, there are different scenarios where the pepper balls are used, so I think these are very important for us to have as tools to be used for those situations. Go to the next page here, so for technology, I'm not the most tech-savvy person, but I definitely appreciate technology, and I'm probably dangerous when I get a hold of some of it, but I do try to mess with it as much as possible, right, because I think it makes us better as a society, as long as we're using it right and appropriately, so recently, we purchased some SmartForce Intranet software, right, for communication with our officers in-house, so that they're able to grab data, we're also able to track better our vehicle fleet, our complaints, our uses of force, or I'm able to pull live data up and do appropriate analysis of it, right, which is what we've been lacking, so there's a lot we can do with that. This, within the last few months, we were able to purchase officers' new iPhone 14s, right, and that's not just to have an iPhone, our body-worn camera system, which is on here, there's something that we use with evidence.com, right, where that's where we store the evidence, but it also goes to, with our interviewing victims, gathering information from crime scenes and everything else, it all, they're able to do everything, instead of doing it at the station, they can do it instantly there, on their phones, makes them more efficient, so that they're faster out on the street and getting out better to serve, as well as working better with the district attorney's office, and then just getting some of that video on there. We're able to upgrade our computer AD dispatch system, right, which is what we, kind of how we deploy to the field, there's more work to be done there as far as the data and analytics that we can pull out, our records management system upgrades, which we're still working on, which goes hand-in-hand with our NIBERS, which is our national incident-based reporting system, that system basically goes hand-in-hand with uniform crime reporting that FBI has been doing since 1930, it's an expanded version of that, right, so if you want data on suspects', victims', locations, or I do as a chief, right, a lot of that is built within that. What was lacking here, and probably more because of budgets and other issues, some cultural, but the ability to pull information out, who, what, when, where, why, how, and to be able to do a good assessment on crime, on quality of life issues, so with these upgrades, we're working to build that system out, and additionally, we've hired a new crime analyst, so she's learning her job within the last month and a half she's been there, but that will help out with that. Another thing, I've been out with a couple of you at community meetings with, in regards to traffic, I know we're talking about the Traffic and Safety Committee, but recently we purchased some data analytical poll systems, right, so that we can, once we place them at, say, Lincoln and Wilcox, ma'am, right, where we had that issue, we can analyze the different lanes of traffic, how many cars were speeding, when they were speeding, and get real-time, get real data, and say, hey, this is what is actually occurring, yes, what you've seen is correct, or no, it was an aberration, right, and also helps us place our resources, our personnel resources, in the right spots for the right reasons. Whittier and Fourth Street, near the brewery, whatever it is, we can place those there, not that we're not, we're going to neglect it, right, we can still pay attention to it, however, that will give us true and actual data of what is occurring as far as traffic patterns. Technology for the future, some of the softwares I talked about, right, there's a new analytical software, crime software, dashboards, that officers can have in their vehicles that I'd like to use, again, that goes to knowing what's happening, where it's happening, why it's happening, Geolitica predictive policing software, which is like a 10-year-type algorithm, which is, I've used it in the past, and I had almost four years of consecutive crime decreases when using that type of software, right, because it kind of tells you, based on those analytics, and there's a forecasting factor, as to where a crime could possibly occur, and you spend up to 25 minutes in a particular, very specific box or area, and just being there displaces that crime, and the grid officers will not only displace it, they'll be able to find out why that crime is occurring, or find who is doing it. So with policing, right, you have your victims, you have your locations, and you have your suspects, right, and you try to affect every triangle, or at least try to minimize what's causing that crime within those triangles, and that's where all that, where all the analytics comes in, it's giving our officers the best tools to do their jobs, right, without inundating them with paperwork. Force Option Simulator and virtual reality training system, those two kind of go hand-in-hand. Not just for officer training, which is great, because that goes to de-escalation, shoot, no shoot, weapons, no weapons, how are you going to talk it out, they've, with technology, they've gotten much better, so for the officers, it's fantastic, because it helps with that, but also community members, right, and our high schools, getting, high schools and middle schools, getting kids to, hey, this is what, this is what an officer sees, this is what happens when you get stopped, our community, our citizen police academies, right, so they kind of know what the thought process is when an officer is going in, and kind of how the officer should be reacting, and also how they should be react, I think it's very educational for community members to have that, so we're going to be looking to purchase those, hopefully, within the next year, year and a half, I'm hopefully to get some grants in the near future on that. Next, training, as far as our training, and our training is, I'll talk a little bit more about personnel, but we're working right now with, we've just upgraded our dispatch training manual for our dispatchers, up until recently, we only had five dispatchers with, out of a total of 11 authorities, right, so I've had to do overtime, it's been difficult, but with this new training manual and new training procedures in a training school that they go to, that's helped with our retention, so we have one in training now who's doing well, we've just hired one, and the one that we just hired was through a new testing process, right, which is, the testing process is unique to Montebello, based on what our dispatchers are capable of, right, they are assessed themselves, and then that's how the test comes out, so we, it's a higher level of success when we bring in dispatchers in that way, and so far, we've been seeing it with a couple that we've recently hired, so that's good. Sworn recruit training courses, we've got agreements with these different agencies to get our recruits through, within the last year, almost all agencies are having trouble with recruitment and hiring, so the academies have been going at a much, not as frequent as they used to, so now we've entered into agreements with all of these, and USBing with the LAPD, because they run, unlike the sheriffs, they run larger classes, but LAPD will run every month, they can hold up to 60, right now, they're doing classes of like 20 to 30, so there's always room, so I can always get an officer in when need be. Not on here is officer wellness in our citizen police academy, but we do have some wellness trainings, I'm trying to create a wellness program, right, to kind of incentivize for them, funded through our police foundation, incentivize wellness, right, giving them a stipend at the end of the year for doing a certain amount of things, and again, that's very detailed, but we can talk later. School resource officers has been very important for us in multiple ways, which is the next slide, oh, I'm sorry, we're good. So last year, we entered an agreement with Montebello Unified School District to provide two school resources, resource officers, so I have one at Sherrill High School, and I have one at Montebello High School, and they've been fantastic, they're getting rave reviews from the students, from the administration, from the teachers, and from the families there, right, it helps with our partnerships, again, working with those school staff, but also prevention and intervention, right, when those kids are talking to an officer daily in a different way than they would otherwise, right, than we're, instead of us being at City Park, and we see the skaters there, and we tell them, go home, or we're citing them, when the officers are on campus, they're interacting with these kids in a different way, on a very personal level, right, and that makes a big difference on how they see us in the future, and also how we see them, and how we see them within their own communities, so that's been great. So support, role models, and also for us, recruitment, I've talked about this before, but our most loyal officers, and the ones that stay with us, are the ones that come from the, from our area, right, from our vicinity, maybe just adjacent neighboring cities, but being in those high schools, that helps me recruit explorers, that helps those explorers then become paid cadets, who then transition to be Montebello police officers, right, so definitely well worth it. Recruitment and hiring, we need to do a lot more of that, we got to recruit a lot more, but we've, this year, we put into place the $5,000 lateral signing bonus, $2,500 dispatch bonus, we've instituted an advertisement campaign on the buses, social media, freeways, new flyers, East LA College, we're also recruiting cadets, we've just increased our pay that we're starting cadets at, to a little over $18 an hour, right, to try to get the kids out of the high schools, and usually, they're only with us for a couple of years, so I wanted to get them in at the higher rate. Go to the next one. So as far as workload, right, I'm not neglecting crime, because I know we've gone up in a couple of areas, but I wanted to focus on response time, right, of what you're going to get when you call, and it kind of shows there, it's reflected kind of where we've been with personnel, right, if you look at 3 minutes and 9 seconds in 2019, 2 minutes and 40 seconds in 2020, 3 minutes and 3 seconds in 2021, and then in 2022, 3:17, and then we've gone up this year, right, the more officers you have out there, the faster you're going to be able to get to your calls. Those times are from when the officer gets the call to arrival, we're probably just a little over four, where we are, we're a little over four, slightly over four minutes from the time the dispatch gets the call, right, the officer can't control when he gets it, it goes to the dispatch, but that adds usually another minute on top of that, and again, which is not bad, not bad at all, so we're within good numbers, considering LAPD and LA sheriffs are six to seven minutes response time, so we're definitely good, and also, we respond to a lot of calls, I know LAPD is looking at stopping, at not going to certain calls, which, again, I'm okay with, and how we reevaluate what we do, however, I think within Montebello, our community expects us out there to be helping them out with certain disputes and things, but not necessarily police-related, but our presence there helps out, so we can talk about that at a later time. So what we have, 48 professional staff is what we're authorized for, including part-time staff, right now, what we are deploying are 36 professional staff, right, so there's some vacancies there, we're working on that, we're filling in, we're just about, we're almost to our full capacity at records, we're still a little low as far as our records, but our dispatch is getting a little bit better. 74 authorized sworn, 64 deployed due to vacancies, so that's a 10 officer gap right there, 122 total authorized sworn and professional staff with 100 deployed due to vacancies, right, so some room for improvement, I think we as a city need to work on. Going to deployable sworn personnel, out of the 74, as I said, we're off at 64, but here's how it roughly breaks down, we have 10 off due to IOD, medical, or other issues, which could be disciplinary, it could be whatever else, right, so I can't get into those details, but that we have those 10 off. We also have five officers in field training, why bring those up, when they're in field training, they don't work by themselves, so it's having like one car or one unit there, and then we have, a good thing, we have four in the academy, we have a few graduating tomorrow, which is a good thing. So going to staffing, and our, I just wanted to compare it a little bit to other cities, right, so if you look, we've got Montebello, Whittier, Bell Gardens, and San Gabriel, as far as the ratio, we're about one for 844 residents, so we're a little worse than some other cities, not a lot, but enough, right, the ideal, and none of these cities are there, is about one to every 500, if you're looking just at population, and again, that's not, that's just a rough thumb estimate, right, because you can, I can talk to you a lot about workload and kind of what really goes into workload. I've got a lot of expertise in that. However, that gives you just a rough idea of where we stand as a city. On the next page, just staffing broken down a little bit more as to April in 2022 when I got here compared to now. So we've gone down a little bit, or actually, we've gone down, right? Especially in the patrol ranks. And these, when I say authorized officers, that's officers and corporals combined. So we're authorized for 55 of those ranks. When I got here, we had 30 in patrol, right now we have 23 in patrol. At the time, we had two on probation. Right now, I've got nine on probation. So I said there are five in training, which means working with another officer. The other four on probation are working by themselves, but they're still considered on probation. I mentioned off, just at the officer rank, we only have five off IOD. When I got here, we had seven detectives, right now we have five. When I got here, we had three in traffic, right now we have one. Community relations was zero, although I did have that unit up to four. Right now, they're just down to two because of the school resource officers. Mentally evaluation unit, we're down to one. Narcotics, we had two in narcotics, now we don't have any. And then training and recruitment, we didn't have either. Now, where I think we should be as far as the officer ranks, right? If I'm looking right now, we have our 24 in patrol. In my ideal world, we would have 34, right? We have, to maximize resources, we just, I put a committee together to look at our deployment. So we're able to do it, instead of using 30 officers, we're able to deploy up to 27 officers to cover what we need because we created cover watches or what the committee did to cover like an overlap watch. So basically, we are, even though we have fewer officers assigned right now, we're maximizing what we have based on workload. Workload goes like this throughout the day, it's peaks and valleys. So my goal was to have as many officers at the peaks and fewer officers at the valleys still maintaining public safety. And so in the end, that's what we're able to do with the switches in the teams without compromising officer safety or public safety. But those are some numbers here for us to see. Eight detectives, right now only have five, right? That goes to when I get calls from either you or community members or city managers on cases or hot things that we need to get off, I barely have enough right now to put together a detail to follow up on some of that, right? With just five detectives. So we're looking to have eight there with two sergeants. Community relations, I'd like to have one in each of your, assigned to each of your council districts, right? And then one extra as a corporal, as a senior coordinator for all of it is the ideal. School resource officers, right now we have two. I'd like to add an additional to rover between our middle schools to touch the kids even earlier. I think the younger we can get kids for anything that we do, the better off we are. Mentally evaluation unit, right now I'm running one with a social worker. I'd like to up that to two, so we're doing that seven days a week coverage and kind of working hand in hand with MCAP. They've already talked about the value that MCAP adds. And again, our team was out there first kind of doing that kind of work, but it's worth, they're worth their weight in gold. Special problems narcotics, that undercover capacity is very beneficial, right? And it's needed almost every week where we need surveillance, where we need some type of follow-up. Our, some of our marijuana, legal marijuana grows were getting hit recently, right? There's not a lot we could do about it, right? Because it would have to just be overtime or trying to get other entities to help us out to work on these suspects. So I'd like to build that up to seven and then use them in different ways. And then training and recruitment, I'd like to have one full-time officer in recruitment. On the next page, it kind of shows you where we should need, be at supervisory's just for sergeants, not counting lieutenants, captains and assistant chief. Right now, we're at 10, I'd like to be at 13. I won't go into the details just for time, but just kind of with the additions, if you're looking at the span of control for a supervisor, it all, it kind of, it makes sense, right? Because you have to have that with officers because of the high-risk situations that we're put in. If you go to the last slide, as far as the five-year plan, right? What my request would be of you, just to, would be to, in 2022, 2023, which is this fiscal year, I'm hoping to hire up to our authorities, are 74. 23, 24 fiscal year to add four more on top of that, right? And that's not just to add based on what we have now, we know we have 1,700 homes going up, right? Minimum 4,000, four to 5,000 people. We have other plans for Garfield, we have a downtown area, right? So we're looking at for going from 62, 63,000 people to like 73,000 people with a Topgolf, which also brings, it brings a lot to the city, which is great, but it also brings calls for service, right? So we need to grow, as a department, we need to grow with that, right? That is my honest professional assessment. And that's why this growth, about four officers every year, 24, 25 fiscal year, looking to build up from 78 to 82. 25, 26 fiscal year to go to 86 officers. And then fiscal year 26, 27 to be at 91 officers, right? There was a slide in there of where we were in 1995. I know there have been a lot of rumors and innuendos, yeah, we had over 100. The best research, and this is working with a previous chief, the best research I could find at any time, we had, the highest time we had was about 95 officers, right? So close to that 100 number. And this was in the mid to early 90s, 1995 was what I could find at that time. And I got hired in 94, the crime was in a much different place, although we are trending in that direction. We were much heavier back then with crime. But I think as the city grows with the population, I think getting back to that 91 number is the ideal for the city over the next five years. Because I understand, there's a lot to pay for, there's a lot that we have to do. I know our officers are in contract negotiations, so I want them to get the best contract that they can, that's fair and reasonable and that the city can afford for them, right? Knowing that we still have other things that we, I want to hire, I want equipment, right? We can't have everything, but I also need to bring officers in, that recruitment and retention. My last slide was supposed to be questions, but it didn't make it on there. So, and please, outside of questions here, because I know it's running late and I think I'm the last one, I think my counterparts are going to sleep here. But please, my phone is, I know as a community member, talked about, you know, about speed on duty, but I am never off. I do when I let the ACM or the CM know, hey, I'm going out of town. That's about the only time that that phone is not available to anyone. But I'm available to discuss anything, any of these items with you and I can spend a lot of time on each of them, just going into details, but I will open myself up to questions.
Thank you very much, Chief Espinoza. As council members, I think we're pretty used to being contacted at all times of day and having pretty long days, but I think public safety more than anyone has your phone ringing off the hook and particularly at hours that you might not be awake or maybe that you don't want to, but you guys absolutely rise to the call of duty and respond to those calls. So thank you very much for your very late presentation this evening and walking us through the current status of our police force. Going down the line for any comments or questions, Councilmember Jimenez.
I think I might just have to set up a meeting with you for questions. It is getting really late, but just so that I don't forget and we don't forget, I do want to follow up on the possibility of a satellite or substation in the south side because it's something in there we talked about. And René just brought up the issue with the cannabis businesses. I did speak to one of the operators who actually shared that at some point because they are so close to the city of commerce. I think one time like one of their calls went to the sheriffs, right? Anyhow, at some point down the line, this week and next week, I do want to sit down with you and just discuss again the possibility and how, really like how that would look as far as bringing that station to the south side.
Yes, and I've looked at a couple of spots, a couple of our parks already, even a few buildings, so that wasn't in here. But I would definitely like to have some type of substation and have that kind of manned and, yeah, we can get into the details on that, but there's a lot that goes with that. But again, goes to personnel, even if I have to hire part-timers too, you know, I plan to augment a little bit with part-timers in addition to what we have, so yes.
Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, Chief. You guys have a very tough job and we're very thankful for everything that you do. You've done a phenomenal job since you've been here. I agree, I think, thank you for giving us the illustration of police officers, we need more police officers. We definitely need more police officers patrolling. There are some workforce challenges, retention, recruitment, specifically with law enforcement. I, you know, I think we have to go into the path of increasing, you know, or implementing the gang unit, right? There, something I've noticed just in the last couple of weeks, some residents calling me, there's been a lot of, you know, tagging and there's been specifically in my district and I think in the mayor's district, so there's been a lot of that activity. And nothing to say about you guys, you guys start doing a lot of great work, but we do need a little bit more police presence and with that, we need more bodies out there, we need more police officers. I love the plan here and absolutely, again, just thankful for everything that you guys do.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Rittomayo.
Yes, thank you for the state of the police and thank you for, you and your team for being our safety nets and our front lines for the residents here in Montebello. I can relay a message from our residents that police and fire are a priority. Public safety was a top issue. So as a city council member, I commit to work in partnership to grow our police department and help address any issues. So it's great to see your efforts with recruitment and retention.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, just want to thank you, thank you for the comprehensive presentation on the state of our police department and really the work that you've been doing coming on board so recently in trying to identify really the gaps, the needs and really looking into the future as how we envision the police department and how we should have it. And I do appreciate kind of that focus in districting and being able to tailor to kind of that transition that we've made. And I know that throughout Montebello, we're one Montebello, but within each district, we have very unique needs when it comes to safety, crime, traffic. And being able to have that focus on a district level, I think is really important in addressing those unique issues within our community and the unique issues that our residents are facing within their area of Montebello. So I really appreciate that intention of kind of focusing and wanting to envision that for the future of Montebello. I would like to also just thank you in regards to your efforts in transparency when it comes to the staffing issues that we're really, realistically having to face as a city. I think for me, one of my biggest issues is traffic and safety and I do want to thank you as well as Officer Morgan and the rest of the officers that were present that day when we, when we met with residents at Lincoln and, what was it, Lincoln and Wilcox. Having, you know, our officers being able to meet with our community members, address the issues that they're going through and really try to identify the solutions, I think is important. So seeing some of this technology coming into play as far as the analytical polls, I think will be a great use of being able to harness our resources in areas that will be addressing the most need. And so I really, I really appreciate that part. I think for me, it is very alarming to see that we only have, you know, for example, one traffic and safety officer versus the, I think, three or four that we should be accounting for and then as well as not having staff in our narcotics, which I know is another big area of concern. And I think that as council members and as a legislative body, it really falls on us to be supportive in whether it's creating policies that support our workforce or in good faith, ensuring that the salaries, the contracts, the benefits that are provided to our police officers really reflect the home that we want to build for them here. And I know that our residents of Montebello are extremely proud of having our police department and so I think it really falls on council as well as, as a city as a whole, to be supportive when it comes to ensuring that our officers are paid appropriately, that they have the resources and the technology they need to be able to do their jobs safely, as safely as possible. And so again, just want to thank you for this, definitely looking forward to working together and figuring out ways of being able to, whether it's implement better technology or work on policies that will help with retention, is going to be a priority for this council. Thank you so much.
Brooke.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I think my colleagues very completely and eloquently stated a lot of the feelings and positions of our residents and I think the general feelings among council. So I appreciate the comments and the various concerns expressed and especially the support for our public safety departments, you know, our police department especially. So with that being said, Chief Espinoza, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. That concludes the state of police services. Before we recess back to finish up closed session, I will take a very quick motion to continue regular business, item number 12, receive and file the fiscal year 2021, '22 annual comprehensive financial report. Is there a motion?
A motion?
There is a motion by the Mayor Protem and a second by Councilmember Jimenez, Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Aye.
Councilmember Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Rittomayo.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Berantam.
Aye.
Mayor Torres.
And I vote aye. We will recess into...
Do you have AB 1234 reports, if there are any? We're obligated if somebody has gone through a... AB 1234 reports. Any council member that has traveled on behalf of the city? None? Then, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to reconvene in closed session.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney, and we are recessed.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney, and we are recessed. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And before I request that motion, I did get a request from the Montebello Community Assistance Program that this evening, we ask for a moment, a moment of silence in recognition for the untimely passing of one of MCAP's participants, Monique Rivera. She was a mother of two young daughters who were all displaced, experiencing homelessness for several years until they were housed by MCAP. A year ago, Monique spoke here at the Montebello City Council meeting to voice her support and gratitude for the assistance from MCAP. We ask that we recognize Monique for being a great participant, a great mother, and a greater human being. If we will please observe a moment of silence for Monique. Thank you very much. Is there a motion from council to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
There are motion by Mayor Protem. Is there a second? Thank you, Councilmember Melendez, for the second. We are adjourned at 11:29.